Hello?
No. We should ask you.
We're on Rich.
You ready?
Yes.
All right, this meeting of the Morgate City Planning Board is called to order. Please stand for the flag salute. I pledge allegiance to the flag. The Republic of America. And the Constitution of the United States. This call.
Tom Collins?
Here.
Clem Wazleski?
Yeah.
Rich Patterson?
Here.
Michael Cristaldi? Michael Cristaldi?
In here, Mike. Mike, we can't hear you. Do you want to? We can't hear you, Mike. You're muted.
No, he's not.
One more time, Mike. Mike Cristaldi.
What is going on?
Hey, Rich, did you do roll call?
Working on it.
Doing it right now.
Michael Cristaldi?
He's here. I can see him talking, but he's getting no noise.
Jim Gallantino?
There's Robert Ellis.
Jim Gallantino?
Why can't there be Zoom out for us?
There's Terry.
Jim Gallantino?
He's still, I heard him talking, but he's not answering that. We've got to get these people online.
All right, listen, can everybody mute their systems and let's start this thing over? I have too much background noise going on, so everybody mute their microphones, please. Thank you.
Okay, Tom Collins?
Here.
Clem Wazleski? Rich Patterson?
Here.
Michael Cristaldi? Is here.
Mike, do you have a volume or anything on your machine?
Mike, you're gonna have to sign off and sign back on.
Jim Gallantino? Margaret Ubernalti? Craig Palmisano?
Here.
Steven Giasecki?
Here.
Remy Pelosi? Joseph DiGeralamo?
Here.
Ron Gruppo? Michael Richmond?
Here.
We still have to wait for Cristaldi and Gallantino. They're here and they're not connected.
Okay.
I believe Cristaldi just signed off and is trying to sign back on.
Rich, I would say maybe if, you know, we can give them a minute, but if they can't get back on, for the first application, both of them cannot participate, I believe. Mike Cristaldi's on the 200-foot list and Jim Gallantino has a conflict for some reason as well, so...
On which case?
On the 207 North Quincy Avenue case.
Jimmy's on.
Hey, Jimmy.
Okay. Okay, we finish the roll call and we'll wait on the third case for Cristaldi. Okay, Palmer?
Okay, and Leo has an announcement about the first one, I think.
I'm not done yet.
Oh, yeah, the roll call's complete, right? We have Jim on and we're just waiting on Cristaldi. The roll call's complete. Was that your question, Rich?
Yes. And then, this electronic meeting is being held in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, and all rules and procedures which govern a regular meeting shall govern this meeting as well. Our goal is to have this electronic meeting run smoothly as close to informal meeting as possible. By joining this meeting, you have agreed to allow your activity to become part of the public record. The platform will be muted only during portions of the meeting where there is no public comment. During the public comment portion of the meeting, please mute yourself when not speaking so as to give other participants their right to be heard and to keep a proper record of proceedings. Public meeting agenda will be posted one day prior to the meeting on our website. If you want to speak, you must first state your name and ask to be recognized by name. Once recognized, you make your comments in accordance with the public decorum protocols. Only one meeting attendee or member of the public may speak at a time and only after stating your name and being recognized by name. Remember, when not speaking, please place your device on mute so you do not interrupt another speaker or the meeting. Please remember to speak clearly to limit background noise. Please isolate yourself as much as possible to ensure there is no unnecessary background audio coming through your device. If there is excessive audio coming through your device or if you fail to observe public decorum protocols, we shall identify such and your device may be muted to ensure there are no disruptions to our business. Please be advised that the board reserves the right to disconnect any member of the public who does not observe proper rules of order. While applicants are hereby advised that should you receive board approval tonight, you must contact the board administrator and sign a form which informs you regarding the timing of receiving building permits and mercantile licenses.
Hey, Rich, it's Tom. Rich, it's Tom.
Go ahead, Tom.
Yeah, Mike's on, but he still can't talk. Maybe you could tell him to dial in on his phone.
That was Salinger.
Yep, I got him.
All right. Mike, could you dial in on your phone? Do you have the phone number? Cristaldi, do you have the phone number to dial in?
He's shaking his head yes.
Okay.
Or nodding his head yes.
Well, speak on the phone when you get in. You want to make that announcement, Leo?
Sure. For anyone on the line or on the Zoom call for the Oberon LLC application, that's 24 to 26 South Benson Avenue, that application's not going to be heard tonight. Did they indicate, Palmer, whether they're going to be back in September?
Yes, and they will renew it.
Okay, so September 24th, it'll likely be heard, but you will get a new notice in the mail and the applicant will republish. This is just an informal announcement in case anyone's on for that, so they don't have to sit through the whole meeting just to find that out. So September 24th for that.
Okay, I like the motion for the approval of the minutes for the meeting in July.
I'll make that motion, Rich.
I'll second it.
Am I on that?
Excuse me, you guys were breaking up. Was that the Benson and Decatur Avenue?
Yes, that application is not going to be heard tonight. September 24th, the applicant will renotice and republish. So that's just an informal application, so you don't sit on the call all night. So it's not going to be tonight. They withdrew.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All in favor of the approval of minutes? Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes? I'd like to hear a motion for approval of decisions and resolutions number 30, 2020. Michael Westman, C.C. Rider. Number 31, 2020, Barry and Suzanne Guten. And number 32, 2020, Stephen and Jamie Greenstand. Do I hear a motion?
I'll make that motion. Joe.
Joe?
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Any opposed? Motion favors. Our planner is not here tonight. He may arrive later. So our vice chairman, Mike Richmond, will be reading Rogers' reports. So the first case is Jason Silverstein, 207 North Quincy Avenue, block 417, lot 7, located in the S-25 district seeking C variances relief for front yard setback, combined side yard setback, pool setback, possibly others, in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. Richmond?
And just before Mike starts, it's my understanding that Mr. Cristaldi and Mr. Gallantino have conflicts and will not participate in this application. If I'm wrong, let me know, but that's what I've been told.
Okay, are we ready?
Yes.
The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Morgate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling requiring variances within the S-25 zoning district. The proposal has a structure above a garage as FEMA permits the space below, design flood elevation to be used as storage and garage and entry space only. The property is located on Quincy Avenue within the Parkway section of the city and is one of the widest streets in the city. The intent of Quincy Avenue is to have wider setbacks than other more narrow streets. The lot is substantially larger than the minimum lot size required for the S-25 zone. Variance is required. Minimum front yard setback, whereas 16.78 feet is the prevailing front yard setback and 11.75 feet is proposed. This is about a five-foot variance. Minimum combined side yard setback, whereas 17.02 feet is the minimum combined side yard setback required. 7.2 feet exist and 12.02 is proposed. Outdoor fire pit setback to building, whereas 15 feet setback is minimum required and 6 feet is proposed to the dwelling on site and 3 feet to the neighbor's garage. Outdoor fire pit setback to combustible surface fence, whereas 5 feet setback is minimum required and 3 feet is proposed. Pool setback to any structure, whereas 3 feet is the minimum required setback to any surface and 1 foot is proposed to an elevated overhead structure. Comments? The checklist waiver request may be granted without detriment to the zoning plan or the application. The proposed building front yard setback will be the smallest setback by about 3 feet within 200 feet and will substantially skew the average setback. Quincy Avenue is one of the streets that have a revised fixed setback distance since it is the widest street in the Parkway section. The proposed front yard setback would likely not meet that setback. The proposed porch meets the required setback requirements and is in line with the front yard setbacks for porches. The proposed side yard setbacks meet the minimum setback requirements. The proposed combined side yard setbacks requires a variance as it is 5 feet short of the required combined yard setback, almost a 30% variance. The stairwell is being considered an allowable projection, however, it is 5 feet closer to the property line due to the setback requirements. There are no hardship variances for this application. The property is wider than a typical property within the S-25 zone. The property is larger in area for the S-25 zone. The pool setback to a structure is for a small portion of an overhead projection. Pool equipment location is not shown. The ground floor appears to have living space and that is not permitted. The proposed fire pit variances were not identified by the applicant in the staff committee process, however, it does not meet the setbacks required to both a dwelling and combustible material fence. Two variances are required. No TGLs or height of the outdoor fireplace is labeled or shown anywhere. The planning schedule shall indicate the number of shrubs per species and the proper number shall be shown. All concrete within the public right-of-way shall meet the city's requirement. The outside shower doesn't show any drainage. The property does not show any grating and all grating and drainage must go from the rear of the property to the front of the property. No runoff shall encroach on any neighbor's property. Minimum tree height is not shown, 10 feet. Location map is not shown anywhere. Applicants shall testify that the garage demolition will preserve the neighbor's garage. The plans do not show how the garage will be protected nor does it show how the exterior wall be treated. The plans do not even show the neighbor's garage, which is on the property line. For variance leaf and waiver relief, the following pertains. Recommendations: The C variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy C1 and C2 criteria where appropriate. If the board finds that the testimony provides evidence that supports the variances, then I would recommend the below recommendations, if not already done, be a condition of approval. The front yard setback proposed is inconsistent with the zoning plan and master plan. A non-conversion agreement is required for the ground floor. Two street trees as required per ordinance, London Plant Tree or Sycamore. A grass governor strip, if not already in place, is required. All shrub requirements shall be met for the front yard, 16 shrubs, minimum 18 inches high. A condition of any approval shall be on the applicant receiving all required permits. Submission of eight sets of signed and sealed plans are required for compliance review prior to issuance of any construction permits. That's it.
Mr. Goldstein?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you, Mr. Richmond, for filling in for Mr. McLarnin. Eric Goldstein, on behalf of the applicant, Jason and Kim Silverstein. Just by way of a housekeeping, couple of items here. The outdoor fire pit is being removed in its entirety. So the two variances that go along with the fire pit are no longer now being sought by the applicants. Additionally, I attempted to get a hold of Mr. McLarnin, but I understand he has a personal issue, so I didn't want to bring this up with anybody else. The math on the combined side yard setbacks appears to be incorrect. Based on Mr. McLarnin's report, the minimum side yards, 5 plus 9 equals 14. It's shown on the combined side as 12. So we'd be seeking 14, not 12. Amending the application with that, we'll get started, if that's okay, Mr. Chairman.
Eric, I got a question. Can you hear me?
I...
Can you hear me, Eric? Mike Richmond?
Oh, you don't press it.
I'm on it. Eric, can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Okay, so is he going by... The line of building above is 7 feet, so is that what he's going by? Or is it setback for the first floor only, which is 9 feet? Do you follow what I'm saying? On the right-hand side of the building? Where the stairwell is?
I'd probably turn that over, Mr. Richmond, to Mr. Obelenis, but I was going by the 5 and the 9 on the proposed setbacks shown on John Obelenis's plan.
Yeah, but also on the plan, it shows the line of building above it being 7, the setback at 7 feet. So, you know, I'm not sure if that's how Roger was calculating it.
I'm not sure.
Do you see what I'm talking about?
I do.
It's right by where the stairwell is. Okay?
I see, yeah, I understand what you're talking about, yes. I just didn't know how Roger made the calculation, because he does have the 5 and the 9. I do understand, Mr. Richmond, the numbers you're referring to on the plan.
Well, if you do the 2 feet, then it comes to what Roger's talking about, which instead of 14 is 12, right? So I think that that's where he's getting that number from. I think that because there is a building above on the second floor, I'm assuming, that, you know, that's still considered into the setback. So that's where he's...
Okay.
Does that make sense?
It does. We'll address that, and I'll have Mr. Obelenis speak to that as well.
Okay.
Okay. With me this evening, I have the expert witness, architect John Obelenis. Mr. Obelenis is an architect licensed in the state of New Jersey. I'd like to have him sworn and then request that you accept his qualification as an expert in the field of architecture.
Okay, John, please state your name and business address for the record.
John Obelenis, 102 South 8th Street, Ryland, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear in front of testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Will you accept his qualifications?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Also with me this evening is Jason Silverstein. He is the property owner. He would like to be sworn, because we're going to have some testimony from him towards the end as well. So Jason, you'll be sworn in by Mr. McLarnin.
Okay, Mr. Silverstein, just state your name and address for the record. I'll get you sworn into.
Jason Silverstein, 207 North Quincy Avenue, Morgate Avenue.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear in front of testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
And proceed, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
Thank you. Once again, Eric Goldstein, on behalf of Jason Silverstein. What we're seeking tonight are some variances for a to-be-built new construction home that Mr. and Mrs. Silverstein, along with their three children, will occupy as their primary residence. Mr. Richmond read into the record, Mr. McLarnin's report. Again, the fire pit being removed entirely, so that's no longer something we are seeking setbacks for. With upon Mr. Obelenis's report and architectural plans, we are seeking to make the house a little bit bigger than would otherwise be allowed in the zone because for various reasons, due to the size of the growing Silverstein family, they wanted to try to get as much out of the house as possible. One of the concerns is that they've got three younger children now who are going to grow, obviously, you know, over time, and they wanted to have a house now that would put them with enough room well into the future, and that's why Jason and Kim tasked John with the subject design. So John's going to walk us through what he was asked to do and how he designed the house and the justification for the variances. So, John, if you don't mind, would you please begin? If we can have the screen come up with the plan and walk us through the variances specifically for front yard, combined side yard, and the pool setback for the structure.
Before we do that, Jason Silverstein, would you mute yourself while you're not talking and creating noise? Thank you. Go ahead, John.
Okay, thank you. So we'll start with the ground floor, where we have parking beneath the building. And on the plan, it shows a number of things. It shows the floor itself, any overhangs above in dotted lines. For example, one of the questions about the side yard setback was the stairwell coming above, which intrudes into that side yard setback, which gives us that 7-foot setback in the side yard. As we go toward the rear of the building, toward the pool, and again, architecturally, I show a furniture arrangement, most likely patio furniture. You know, it was talked about being a living space, but the trend nowadays in the homes we're designing is that we're creating that with the height from the ground to the ceiling below and the parking below, we're creating indoor-outdoor type spaces where they have access to the backyard, they're undercover, and most likely will become, you know, an indoor-outdoor patio space. So that's what that depicts. It's not really living room space, but in any case...
John, one moment there. There's three things allowed in that space, and that's parking, stairwells, and storage.
Okay. We have access to the backyard from that one corner. Listen, you're fine. I don't want to argue that.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, one thing to note, and it's in Rogers' report. There will be a non-conversion agreement, signed and filed with the county as part of this application, no matter what's built there. So whatever the family decides to ultimately build, there won't be any living space below the base block.
Thank you.
I never understood the need for that, since you're not allowed to have it anyway. I don't know why they have to swear they're not going to do it. But whatever, move on.
And then, as you approach the backyard, you have the pool. The pool with the surrounding patio and a outdoor shower tucked underneath the stairs. One of Rogers' comments is drainage. It's going to directly drain into the ground as we normally do with a rock-based drain directly into the ground. It is outside the building footprint, so it's accessible from the outside, so it's an outdoor shower. So, on to the first living floor. It's basically living, kitchen, dining, powder room, pantry. We call it den with a private bathroom. Access from the front with steps and access to the backyard with stairs. Second floor, which is basically all bedrooms, we have three bedrooms and bathroom suites and a small den at the front of the building with a spare deck, so that it's sort of a public space used by all the occupants in the family with access to the deck and all the objects. Three bedrooms there. And then, on the top floor, the master bedroom suite with all the access from the stairs, the bedroom being in the back, master bath in the middle, and a walk-in closet in the front. That pretty much completes the plans themselves.
Now, John, and I know Jason's on, potentially answering this question. There's a note about the demolition along with the garage adjoining property. Can you just describe the condition of that now? Because as I understand it, Jason has corrected any problems with the garage being near the property line and the demolition being complete.
I guess I can defer to Jason. I believe that he stated that he has already done the work. He's taken off his side of the garage and repaired the neighbors, and he can vouch for that.
We'll have him testify in a minute, but from your perspective, we're basically working from a blank canvas, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So we do have some variances that are being sought. Can you talk about the front yard setback and the reason that the variance we're seeking for the setback to the house is necessary, whereas we're not seeking one for the porch?
Well, the way we see it is that it would be part of the den on the first floor and the family sitting room on the second floor. That part of it bumps out. I look at it as probably an extended bay-type window that protrudes into the front yard and adds some character to the inside space and, of course, to the outside elevations. But we held it somewhat shy of the front deck, so it doesn't go beyond the front deck to the right side of the building, but it is a portion of that front facade that does project into that front yard setback by the dimension we discussed, the 5 feet. But we felt that it's not a major component of the front, but more of an accent to that front elevation.
So if you look at the requirements for front yard setback to the porch, 11.15 feet, that's being met, but based upon that portion of the house that bumps out towards the front, the front yard setback is actually just a little bit more to the house than it is to the porch itself, correct?
Correct.
Okay, and why is that?
It was a desire of the owners to, again, have space for family use. It was another part of the plan that would be usable in different circumstances. We felt that it just allowed us that one, you know, sort of front view access for the family.
Okay. Now, with regard to the side yard setbacks, we heard Mr. Richmond, as he read Mr. McLarnin's... Now, with regard to the side yard setbacks, we heard Mr. Richmond, as he read Mr. McLaurin's report, he talked about the distances on each side, five feet to the left, nine feet to the right, and how that translates with the 12 or 14 feet with the overhang as the combined side yard setback.
Well, of course, we meet the five-yard setback. That's the easy one. And the larger the two setbacks, we're allowed to bump in with stairs, fireplaces, et cetera. And the feeling was that the majority of the building is at the nine-foot setback. We just have that one stair that encroaches into the side yard setback by two feet. Again, a very small portion of that facade.
Eric? Silverstein?
Yes.
Again, I'm looking, maybe I didn't understand you before. Roger says you need 17.02 feet. Where's 14 feet come from?
The left side is a five-foot step back. The right side is a nine-foot step back. Combined, it's 14.
But you need 17.
Correct, but he has it down as 12.
Oh, okay, okay. Now I understand. Thank you.
And Mr. Richmond was correct with regard to the plan as there was a bump out, but the portion of that, which is in need of the variance, is relatively minor compared to the length of the house from Quincy towards the rear. So I'm sorry, John, please, please continue regarding...
In part of our, part of our laying out the plan is the desire to make the building wider is that we do have a lot that's larger than allowed for that zone. You know, it's a 40-foot width for the S-25, and it's a 46-foot actual lot. So we felt comfortable increasing the width, consisting with the increased width of the lot size in that zoning district. So we arrived at this extra dimension with the side yard setbacks. Same thing for the third, the second, well, the third floor is set, it's set in. So the third floor is really not affected, but pretty much it will be the first, the ground floor, first and second floors into that extra side yard dimension.
Mr. Obelenis, from the point of understanding your reasoning, you have six extra feet, so you should need less setbacks. I don't understand your logic to say that because the lot's wider, you should go wider. You have, you have, you can do a wider than what's on a 40-foot lot, and you're asking for more than what's allowed. I just don't understand your reasoning, but that's fine. If that's your reasoning, that's fine.
We tried to work it, I guess proportions. You know, it's not scientific, but we felt that there at least allowed us some justification to make the plan wider.
Okay.
And John, one of the things which, you know, we've looked at Roger's report here a little bit more in depth, with regard to the rear yard, you've not maxed out the house being back further, required a 16 feet, but you designed it with a 21-foot rear yard, correct?
Correct.
Okay, explain that a little bit as well.
Well, the idea was that, again, with, we discussed the family, is that that rear yard, the combination of a pool, the patio, the, what we call, I guess you call the veranda, which is space under the building, that can become the, their sort of family resort, you know, where the kids play, they can exercise. We wanted as much space as possible in that approach with the building. And perhaps the idea was that keep the building closer to the street or loaded toward the street and a little wider and allow for a larger rear yard with pool, patio, and, you know, I believe, from Jason, it was a growing family with team sports and swimming exercises, that they would utilize that backyard for full-family activities.
Okay, great. Now, we also need a variance for the pool setback to the structure, but not on the first level, correct?
Correct.
All right, so there's enough room from the pool to the house on the first level for anyone to get around from pool's water's edge to the house. But up above, there's a bump out of a window, which forces the house out a little bit on the second level. Just go over that a little bit as well.
Well, first, the first, there's two parts here. One is a two-foot, two-foot setback, which is the floor above, the first floor above. That's two feet, which requires a variance. And then further up, there's a, on the bedroom floor, second floor, there's a window seat, so a bay-window window seat that also goes one foot further from the building line. And that's, that generated the one-foot setback for the pool two floors below. So it's sort of like a reverse stack layer cake look, where this first floor encroaches toward the pool by two feet, and then on the second floor, bay-window seat, that generated that one-foot setback two stories above the pool itself.
There's no open deck.
Are you saying there's two big windows, one foot from the pool, one story up?
They're on the second floor.
Exactly. One story up, right over the pool, there's two windows.
Correct.
Got it. Thank you.
And John, just describe those windows. They're for emergency ingress and egress, but they're also not open where you could go out and say, stand on a deck with the pool below.
Those windows don't open?
They do.
They do open. But there's no entrance to go out from the window, Mr. Patterson, to stay a deck or a standing area. They're the bump-out windows for the sitting room, the sitting area for the young daughters.
Yeah, the windows don't go down, they don't go down to the floor. I mean, they're elevated with the sill, you know, they're probably two and a half feet above the floor. You just can't walk out. I mean, requiring effort to, to walk out of those windows.
But they still do provide emergency personnel ingress and egress, correct?
They do, yes. They're egress windows.
We spent a lot of time going through the various design aspects that you were tasked by the family. In your professional opinion, as a licensed architect in the state of New Jersey, do you see any detriment to the zone code of the city of Margate or the New Jersey Municipal Land use law if the board were to grant these variances?
Well, if you look at the overall plan and the size of the building and the coverages, other than the setbacks, it doesn't exceed those coverages. Well, within building coverage, within lot coverage, landscape. So the building is not oversized, other than the fact you're asking for a greater width. So it fits well in the site. I think proportionally, it works. I don't see it as a detriment to the code.
And to the extent that there could possibly be any detriments associated with this application, do the benefits of what the Silversteins are looking for exceed greatly what potentially could be seen as a detriment?
I'm sorry, I must have lost you. Can you do that again?
Sorry. Do the benefits of this project outweigh the detriments to the extent there could possibly be a detriment?
No, no. I don't see a detriment. I see the benefits with all, all that we planned into the building, I believe, exceed the detriments.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, Mr. Obelenis is going to obviously remain on the call, but I would like Mr. Silverstein to discuss a little bit about why he's seeking the house to be a little bigger, because his testimony as the property owner is fairly important regarding his growing family and why he wanted the house to be set up as John had designed. So Jason, if you don't mind, we've been talking about this for quite a while. Walk us through what you're trying to do here and the fact we need some variances. We've eliminated a couple, but we still need a few regarding your pool setback, combined side yard and the front yard of the building. Tell us what you're trying to do here.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Jason Silverstein. I'm a lifelong resident of Margate, eight months of my life. And now I have three children, which I raise in Margate, and I send them to Margate schools. So my intent of building this house is to live here with my family year-round and raise my family. I have an 11-year-old son, an eight-year-old daughter, and a six-year-old daughter. And where we used to live was a small, small house, and it was tough, difficult raising the kids. But as they got older now, I'm looking to expand and have more space. My daughter competes swimming. She's top of her class. And the pool is a really big thing for our family. As far as, what else would you like me to say, Eric?
Well, just the fact that, you know, you want as much space as you could as possible regarding indoor living, because obviously, in today's weird world, being outside for everybody isn't necessarily a great thing. And you want to have as big a house, but you also want to have a pool area and some, you know, fenced-in spot so that you can safely enjoy time with your family.
Yes, correct. And like I said in the beginning, you know, my daughter competes USA swim, so she needs the pool to swim in. We train at the JCC, but, you know, they're limited with hours right now. And, you know, this is very important to my daughter and our family to have that kind of training for her.
Okay, good. Ladies and gentlemen, once again, Mr. Silverstein will stay on. I would suspect that we'll have some public comment here, and maybe I would reserve the right to come back to both him and to Mr. Obelenis, depending on what the board has other questions for us or that the public has questions for the board.
Anyone on the board have any questions?
Yep. Questions? I have comments or questions. Mike Richmond?
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, so to me, I think the biggest bone of contention here is the front yard setback. Five feet's a lot of setback. And I think Mr. McLaurin's points were valid for that street. It's really going to skew the average setback on Quincy Avenue. And to me, there's, there's a couple of things you could do that would get close to eliminating that setback or, you know, at least reducing it. One thing is, you have, you know, you're talking about training. The pool's 25 feet long, so if, you know, if you're doing laps, that, I don't think that would be effective. But you could reduce the width of the pool from 13 feet to 11 feet. Also, where you have the outside shower position, I mean, maybe that could get moved over into where you're showing that, a sliding door or whatever. Maybe it could get moved over into that nook. You know, and maybe there could be like some type of, either it's a slider could be moved over or it could be a single door. I don't have a scale on me, but it looks like that shower is like about at least four feet wide. You know, you'd still have to deal with the stairs, but, you know, I think if you got creative with that, you would, you know, you could, so between maybe two feet with that and another couple feet by relocating the shower, you're still getting to keep the house at the same size. You're just, you know, sliding it back and, you know, maybe losing... You really wouldn't be losing too much even on your patio area around the pool because you're just making the pool a little thinner, rather than 13 feet, you're going to 11 feet or 10 feet. So, you know, as far as the, the setback, the combined yard setbacks, I, I mean, I get what you're saying that, you know, McLaurin's math is right because that is a protrusion, but it is a small protrusion for the stairs. So maybe that's not so critical. And then, and then the thing with the, you know, the intent of the three-foot around-the-pool ordinance was that if someone was in distress in the pool, that there would be a three feet right away where you could get to them, where before we were letting people just bang their pools right into the side of the house. So, you know, I, I know there's a little bit of a debate about whether people can jump out of windows, but people can jump out of windows and do whatever they want anywhere. So, you know, I'm still not on board with structures above, maybe besides a deck being, counting as being too close to the pool. So, you know, I don't know if your client is open to the suggestions that I made with reducing the width of the pool and maybe relocating the outside shower. But I think that that's going to be a real issue. I'm assuming, I'm just speaking with myself, for myself, but I think that's going to be an issue for other board members.
Are you done, Mike?
Yep.
All right, well, I'd like to counter some of the things he said. As far as the pool issue, people can jump out a window, they could do crazy things, but not when we grant a variance that allows them to jump out a window. Then it's our problem. If they want to eliminate those two windows, I have no problem with it being above the, above the pool. But with those windows there, and that's part of the board's reason for the setbacks, is the second floor. We've had people come in with balconies over pools that we've turned down, and they have two big windows there that you don't have to climb to even get to because the seat's right there. I can't see where that pool would be any good. I mean, where the setback would be allowable. And as to the side setbacks, they have a, basically, instead of a 40-foot lot, they've got one that's 15% bigger than what's allowed, and they could have a wider house. And I think, I haven't heard any reasons other than this is what we want. You know, I see no benefit to the neighborhood. They're making it bigger than what it should be. So I really have a problem with the side setbacks. Anyone else on the board?
Rich, it's Tom.
Tom, go ahead.
I agree with both what you said and what Mike Richmond said. But basically, yeah, I know, it's me. You're saying that they could keep the windows as long as they don't open, if they were picture windows?
I have no problem with that either, but Eric said they needed to have access. And I don't know how a family would put a ladder up there with one foot access either, with one foot setback, but...
Well, you couldn't. So they're not egress windows. So you really, they're not necessary to open. Okay.
I have no problem with that.
Okay. The other question is, with the pool and moving the house back, we have a six-foot setback in the back, which we've tried to keep, but couldn't we ease that to five or four and let them slide everything back further?
Tom, when we changed it from 10 to 6, we were pretty adamant about this is what we did. When we had 10, they asked for 8, but now we've moved to 6 with no budgeting, and people want, want less than less. So...
Well, it wasn't him that asked.
Let's hear from other board members, too. I'd like to hear. Go ahead, Tom. I'm sorry.
I said that was Mike Richmond's idea and not the homeowner's, so, and I was just kind of... And if they, and I agree with Mike, if you cut some of the overhangs and things out, you can make it a more manageable property. So I agree with what you and Mike Richmond said.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board?
This is Joe. This is Joe Rich.
Joe, go ahead, Joe.
I'm agreeing with the other board members. You know, if you move the house back, you know, it'll, it'll conform. You won't have that front yard setback. There's no reason, they could have built a house on that lot without any variances whatsoever. It's just it's a wish list. They want to have a pool, they want to have some other things, larger house, when it's really just making those adjustments and changes that could really work without the variances. So I, you know, I'm, again, the front yard setback is a huge problem for me.
And look, I had a 10-foot setback with my pool, and I had to make my pool 10 feet wide, so I didn't need a variance. It was 40 feet long, but it was 10 feet wide. So for laps, for the kids swimming, it's plenty. Anyone else on the board? All right, at this point, Eric, do you have any comments, or should I bring the public in?
I would like to comment, Mr. Patterson, but I will wait until the public is done, please.
Okay, so now I'm opening it to the public. So if you identify yourself, I'll call on someone, and everyone else should mute themselves. So is anyone from the public wish to speak?
My name is Bill.
Bill, go ahead, Bill. State your name and address, and you'll have to be sworn in.
Phil Corby, 210 North Quincy Avenue, Margate.
Okay, Mr. Corby, can, please raise your right hand. Do you swear in front of testimony? You're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
All right, please go ahead, Bill.
Yeah, sure. Thank you. So I had heard earlier in your testimony that you said there were no hardships. But then, the way it sounds to me, there are hardships based on the size of your family. And I was just curious, what are the real hardships here? Because apparently there has to be if they're asking for variances.
Oh, there doesn't have to be, but I think it says right in Roger's report that this is not a hardship base.
Yeah, it said it wasn't.
Right, right.
In my opinion, it sounds like it probably is if you're looking for more space for your children.
Well, that's not a hardship.
Right, I agree. Right. And then, so how many feet on the Amherst side would it be additional over and above what the setback is now currently?
I think it's about three feet. Is that correct, Eric?
On the Amherst side?
Yes.
So you're talking about, if you're looking at the...
Five feet, right?
Five feet.
Five feet additional on the Amherst side, and then how many in the front additional? And how many in the back additional?
The back doesn't need any.
Okay.
And the front is required to be 16.78, and it is 11.75, so it's five feet. And the front is required to be 16.78, and it is 11.75, so it's five feet.
Over five feet there, too, so, yeah, I kind of agree with what you were saying, if you could make it work within that footprint, I think it would, I think it would work. That's all I have to say.
What's the total square footage of the house, John Obalinas? Eric, do you know?
I don't. John, can you hear us?
My memory, my memory conflicts over thirty-three hundred feet, so.
What was it, Rich, I'm sorry?
I think it's over 3,300 square feet.
Mm-hmm, that's a fairly decent size. That's all I had to say, Rich, thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else from the public wish to comment?
I would like to, Rich.
Is this Krieger?
Yes, Simi Krieger.
State your name and address, and then Leo will swear you in.
Simi Krieger, 206 North Quincy Ave.
And Ms. Krieger, please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you.
All right, I appreciate being invited tonight, and I look forward to having new neighbors. My family's been in Margate since the early 60s. I've been in this house myself for 25 years, I plan to live and retire here for hopefully a very long time. I appreciate what Mike Richmond said. It is really important to me to conform to keep the integrity of this neighborhood. There are a lot of year-round people here, a lot of people with kids, young kids, and it's nice to see that some of the houses have actually turned over and maintained size. So, I do appreciate that very much.
Well, are you in support of the application or against the application?
I am against, I am against it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the public like to speak? Now's your time.
I would like to speak. Teresa DiVincenzo, 205 North Quincy, I am directly next door to 207.
Before you say anything, you need to be sworn in, Leo.
Ms. DiVincenzo, what was your last name again, I'm sorry?
DiVincenzo.
Okay, please raise your right hand, do you swear from the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks, go ahead.
Okay, so I, too, am happy to have new neighbors, and they're delightful, from what I know, they seem to be very nice, but I am concerned about the complexion of our neighborhood, putting such a huge house on this lot, it's gonna affect, I think, the whole entire neighborhood, it's gonna change the complexion of our neighborhood, and I'm a little bit worried about that.
Anything else?
I wanna know exactly how many feet from my property, I heard Amherst, what about Monmouth? Because I didn't understand it or I didn't hear it.
No, it wasn't from Amherst Avenue, it was the Amherst Avenue side.
No, I understand that, and I wanted to know my side, which would be closer.
Five feet, which complies.
I'm sorry?
Five feet, which complies with zoning. It's a five-foot setback on that side, and that complies with zoning.
No, it's a seven-foot setback. She's on, she's asking on the Monmouth Avenue side, it's seven feet.
That's correct.
It's seven feet.
All right, I don't have it in front of me, I thought it was five, go ahead, so seven foot.
Okay. Okay, that's better.
For a very small portion.
Right, okay.
All right, anyone else in the public have any comments or questions? Public portion is closed. Eric?
Hey, Rich?
Steve?
Wait, one moment.
Steve Chisaki.
Who?
Steve Chisaki.
Steve, go ahead.
I just have a point of inquiry here, because I'm curious over something, that in the backyard, they have a telephone pole with a transform on the top, and that's how it services the house. How do they get around that? I mean, how would, you know, if there's ever a problem where they gotta get a trouble truck back there or something? I'm just curious what they do in that situation.
I'm not sure, Steve, but it's really not something that's the board's problem, that's something that Jimmy and Roger would take care of, or the fire department, so I don't think it's something we can discuss because we have no control over that.
Okay.
Eric?
So, during the time that the public was talking and that the board had questions, Jason and I were texting back and forth, and he has taken what Mr. Richmond said to heart regarding some possible adjustments to the layout. They are as follows. The windows, which were the structure above one foot setback and two feet, would be inoperable, not opening, and they would have an access window in another spot. The side yard setback would be decreased one foot on each side, and the front yard would be pushed back three feet. So we'd like to amend the application.
How much does that leave on the total side yard?
Well, it would be a total of 16 for much of it, 14 for that one portion, so it would be 1.02 feet for just about the majority of the house, and as Mr. Richmond pointed out, there'd be a portion of it which would be two feet wider for a smaller area.
Okay. And how much on the front, did you say?
Three feet pushback.
So that's two feet short, correct?
From the front, correct.
How are we achieving the three feet pushback to the back of the house? How are you achieving?
Are you referring to the front, Mr. Richmond?
Wait, yeah, are you, how are you doing that? Are you making the house smaller, are you making the pool smaller? Are you relocating the shower?
No, the pool, in the same size, the porch, the house would just go three feet reduced size towards the rear of the property line.
Okay, so you're gonna reduce the house and not, not do anything with the pool or anything else? Okay, I'm just curious.
So you could take a foot off the pool and meet the requirements, and you don't wanna do that?
Well, no, the pool's really important, and this is not a made-up story, their daughter's in the pool all the time, she needs as much room as possible, and although it may be a good-sized pool for Margate, it's something she really needs to work on, on a regular basis, and I'm not sure there'll ever be a time you can go into a public pool again, so this is it for them, the pool we're gonna keep the same.
That covers the length of the pool, not the width of the pool, you would only be decreasing the width of the pool here.
It's the size that's fairly important for them.
Okay.
Yeah.
Eddie, are you done, Eric?
Well, I'm not 100% sure, I just wanna confer one thing with Mr. and Mrs. Silverstein, so if you don't mind one second, I just wanna check something. Mr. Patterson, the applicants had asked, they can make the pool slightly smaller, but if they make the pool smaller, they don't wanna change the layout of the house, they would try to keep as much of the width of the house as possible, and I'm just trying to make some notes here on my plan. So it looks like the front, I'm sorry?
Nothing, I'm just saying, please recap everything as it will be voted on.
Okay, so, the pool setback to the structure, we'd like to keep as it's submitted, but the windows will be inoperable to access the rear of the property, thereby decreasing the possibility anyone can jump out, okay? We've eliminated the outdoor fireplace and the fire pit, and the front yard to the building has been decreased from 11.75 to 14.75. The family would like to keep the width of the house, because it does affect the layout, even that foot on each side makes a difference, so we would keep that at 12 feet at the narrowest point, 14 feet for much of it.
So you're not bringing in a foot on each side?
No.
Just tell me when you're done, and see if there's any more board comments.
That's it, those are the only variances, and as modified, that's what we'd go with, obviously, the non-conversion agreement, all the conditions in Mr. McLaren's report will be complied with. And we rest.
Any other questions from the board, any comments from the board?
So just, just to clarify, the front yard, it's Mike Richmond, the front yard setback, you're gonna push, you're taking three, you're reducing it by three feet, so you're still gonna have a two-foot variance, is that what you're saying?
Correct.
And how are you achieving, what are you doing, how are you getting rid of the three feet? Taking it off the house?
Yes.
Okay.
And did you say you're, you're not taking anything off the pool, correct?
Correct.
Okay. We're just going back and forth here, I'm just trying to get clear.
Absolutely, wanna make sure this vote is as clear as can be.
All right, if there's no comments from the board, Leo, would you read the motion, please?
Yeah, Rich, I think we did, but did we close the public, got to everyone?
Yes, I did close the public.
All right. So someone needs to make a motion for C. variance relief for the following, as amended, minimum front yard setback of 14.75 feet, where 16.78 feet is the required prevailing, so it's about a two-foot variance. The minimum combined side yard setback, the required 17.02 feet, and they are proposing, it's 14 feet for the majority of the house, but there's that bump out that we discussed that's at 12 feet, and then the pool setback to the, to those windows above, they're at three feet's required, and they don't meet that, they're at one feet. There's a couple submission waivers, the conditions will be that the windows above the pool that create those variances will be made inoperable, so that no one can jump out them into the pool, and the applicant will comply with any other representations it made during the course of the hearing and any other conditions in Rogers' report, unless otherwise modified or addressed.
I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion, it's Joe.
I'll second it. It's Tom.
Tom Collins?
You know, to be quite honest, as I've been going through this, it's very hard for me to look at a house going onto an empty lot and giving variances for size. In this case, I give a little bit of credence to the fact that it's a local family, I know it's a good family, they have kids in our school system, I also wanna keep the neighborhood intact as much as I can. I think the fact that they moved the house back and it's only a small two-foot, the minimum front yard setback, I understand the pool justification, I have one myself, I would wanna keep it the same size. Side yards, if they didn't have the bump outs, I wish they would have removed them, but they are aesthetically pleasing, and we do like to see the bump outs. So, at this point, I think the, I think that what they're gonna put up in the attributes of the, to the street are gonna be outweighing any of the detriment, so I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlasky?
Well, I don't wanna take the time to address each of these required variances. They've already been discussed enough, but, the architect said one thing that I think is pertinent, he had a blank canvas to start with. I think a house that would meet the needs of the family could have well have been designed and could still be designed without requiring the setbacks. And I haven't heard any valid justifications for any of them, so I vote no.
Richard Patterson?
I would only repeat what Clem said, I vote no.
Craig Palmisano?
I also agree with Clem 100%, I vote no.
Joseph DiGeralamo?
I agree with Clem as well, and vote no.
Stephen Chisaki?
I also vote no.
Yeah, I mean, the neighbors that spoke really didn't give a favorable comment to allowing the variances, I think that it'd be very simple to, you know, build this house without variances and, you know, just get going with it, so, as it is being a blank slate and pushing the house out, I'm gonna vote no.
The application fails with one vote in favor and six opposed.
Next case is Robert and Sandra Edelstein, 8705 Amherst Avenue, block 616, block 30, located in the S-40 district, seeking C. variance relief for structure height and possibly others, in order to construct a deck expansion and a freestanding roof structure. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying at the side of the spot. Mr. Richmond?
Okay, this is, hold on a second.
Jim? Jim? Rich?
The applicant is seeking relief.
I'm back in, Mike, you wanna tell, you wanna come back in?
Yeah, as long as we, as long as Mike can speak, he's back in.
Okay.
Mike, we can't hear you, have you tried the phone connection?
I mean.
Can you do that, Leo?
As long as he doesn't have any comments, if he could hear us, and he doesn't have any questions.
Okay, he could vote with a, you know which is up and which is down for yes or no, Mike?
Background, the applicant is seeking leave from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct an oversized accessory structure on top of an approved deck. The deck is within the building's setback lines of an approved subdivision and law consolidation plan approved in 2019. The height of the structure and area require variances. The third variance is for an expansion of a non-conforming, a now non-conforming deck. No decks above 10 inches from grade may exist in the side yards extended towards the water. The area of expansion is relatively small. Documents, never mind, variance is required. Accessory structure height, whereas the maximum accessory structure height is nine feet and 16 feet from grade is proposed. Accessory structure, structure area, whereas the maximum accessory structure area is 80 square feet and 240 square feet is proposed. Rear yard deck height, whereas deck heights in rear yards within the outside of the building lines or side yard setback extended is not permitted over 10 inches from grade, and one is proposed 5.3 feet from grade. Comments, the accessory structure was denied in the zoning application, as was the deck expansion. This property created the reason for the rear yard deck height ordinance to be revised to reduce the deck from extending all the way to the property lines. to reduce the deck from extending all the way to the property lines. The area of the accessory structure exceeds that as permitted for accessory structures, but is within the allowable limits for principal structure. The shrub count shall be as required from the subdivision plan. Street trees are required as well as a governor strip. The area of the deck contains no habitable space, which is consistent with the approved subdivision plan. The waivers can be granted without detriment to the application or the zoning plan.
I'm done. You're up, Eric.
You ready?
Yes. Ladies and gentlemen, Eric Oldstein on behalf of the applicants, Robert and Sandra Edelstein. With me this evening is Peter Weiss, who designed the project. Prior to getting to Pete, I just want to give everyone some background as we've been before the board in the past here. So some of you may remember, there was a very large house that covered about 100% of this lot prior to 2019. In 2019, the Edelsteins and their neighbor, the Gubernicks, bought the lot for the very purpose of demolishing the house to have more open space. They essentially took three homes, got rid of the middle home, and made the middle home open space, some of which the Gubernicks took, some of which the Edelsteins took. The Gubernick's house is currently undergoing a fairly substantial renovation and addition, and the Edelsteins wanted to have more outdoor space. But one of the conditions of our prior subdivision was that nothing on the Edelstein portion of the property could be habitable space. They've complied with that, and the Edelstein portion of the lot now has a deck that matches up to the lot behind their house, which had an existing deck when they built on the canal. The variances we're seeking are fairly simple. The deck expansion is by right and is under construction. There's an area that Pete's gonna go into in a little bit between the Edelstein house and the canal, which for coverage purposes, doesn't meet your ordinance. They're gonna fill that in, so it's uniform from one side to the other. And then they're going to build a shade structure on the deck under construction now, because that portion of the, of the deck gets extraordinarily hot in the afternoon. They've tried umbrellas, they've tried awnings, nothing really works back there. And the umbrellas blow around, it's a little bit difficult to keep anything in place. So the concept that Pete Weiss designed was a shade structure that would be permanent, but it wouldn't be habitable, which we agreed to a year ago. Nothing on that portion of the property would have anything other than a day use or a night use while people are on the deck. And it would provide shade during the day and possibly some decorative lighting at night. There's a fairly extensive landscape plan that's been provided. And the issue really here is the deck itself matches up to the deck behind the house, which is on Amherst. The Pembroke portion of it, at an equal height, there's actually a drop down of a foot. You're measuring your accessory structure from there. So when you go up, you're not measuring from grade. If you were measuring from grade, this would be by right. Roger said, this needs a variance because of the size of the roof itself. Had this structure been an awning type roof, it wouldn't be a variance at all, because it wouldn't be considered a structure, because there wouldn't be any roof on it. So even though it's a bit of a technicality, what we're seeking is size of the structure, the roof on the structure, and then the area, which I would propose, affects no one other than the Gubernicks and the Edelsteins behind the Edelstein house to fill in a very small area that people discuss in a second, so the deck is uniform across the back of the Edelstein house. Having said that, I'm gonna swear Mr. Weiss in. I see that Mrs. Edelstein's here. I'm not sure if Mr. Edelstein's on the phone or on the video, but we'll get to them if the board needs to speak to them in a little bit. So Pete, if you wouldn't mind, be sworn by Mr. Manus, and I'm gonna ask the board to accept you as an expert in the field of architecture.
Pete, just your name and business address for the record.
Peter Weiss, 101 North Washington Avenue, Margate.
And please raise your right hand. You swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Mr. Patterson, I would ask Mr. Weiss to be accepted as an expert in the field of architecture.
We accept his qualifications.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Weiss, you heard what I said earlier about how we got to this point, eliminating a very large dated house that blocked pretty much 100% of any view from Pembroke to the canal and from the canal to Pembroke. You were working as well with a clean slate to design a deck to match up with the Edelstein deck on the other side. So walk us through, if you would, the design, not only of the deck, which is a foot lower than the Edelstein deck on the area behind their house, but the shade structure specifically discussing the square footage, along with the fill-in area between the Edelstein property and the Gubernick property.
Okay, so as a result of the subdivision, we ended up with an L-shaped lot that wraps around the corner property. So the piece of the property that runs out towards Pembroke Avenue is 27.78 feet by 65 feet. So we designed a deck that, as Eric said, it would be one foot lower than the existing deck behind the Edelsteins' house. And it would conform with the side yard setbacks, because we have five feet on the other side. On the Pembroke side, we have 26 and a half feet, which is far in excess of what's required for the Pembroke side. Currently, there's an addition being built on the adjacent lot that was subdivided off. And that's gonna be at least two stories, as you can see today, at least two stories over, over a garage. So as mentioned, the existing deck has all permits and it's under construction. So what we propose to do is add a permanent roof structure on the new portion of the deck for the purpose of providing shade and, as mentioned, maybe some lighting, you know, at night. The, you know, one option would have been to just cover this deck with awnings or umbrellas or whatever, but we feel it's a better solution to have a permanent deck, primarily because it's safer. It's not gonna blow away in a storm. It could be anchored down to the deck or actually to the piles. So that's kind of where we went with that. So if you, if you really look at this project, it's, it's basically a room without walls. So there's four posts with two beams supporting the roof. And I kind of differ with Roger in that if you measure the dimensions of the post, post to post, you have 12 and a half feet. So the area of the area within the structure, I guess you'd say, it comes out to about 156 square feet, which is much smaller than what Roger was suggesting.
And Pete, just in that regard, Roger measured the area of the roof of the structure, correct?
Apparently Roger measured to the outside perimeter of the roof structure, which is not normally done.
No, that is, he's been doing that for a while now. It's a bird's eye view is where footage is measured from. That's standard.
Yeah, but this is Mike Richmond. Not necessarily. I mean, when you build, when you build a house and you have overhangs, when you have soffits, we're not, we're not measuring, I don't think we're including the soffits in the, in the coverage area.
You're right. You're right. That was wrong.
If this had walls, you'd be measuring the walls. The walls would be 12 and a half feet by 12 and a half feet. So let's.
And respectfully to Mr. McLaren, the measurement of the interior, when, as Pete pointed out, from post to post to post, is less than would be allowed if the Edelsteins had two accessory structures on the property, which is permitted. So they have an accessory structure on a deck, the measurements of which from the inside are still less than the total measurements of what would be allowed for the cumulative number of accessory structure. Is that correct, Pete?
Yes. I mean, we'd be permitted to have two accessory structures that are 80 square feet each. So obviously, if you combine two into one, you'd have essentially what we have. So it's not a big ask as far as I'm concerned.
You say there's no walls? I thought the plan showed walls.
We have a screen, like an AZAC screen on the Pembroke Avenue side. So one side, there'd be some slats, basically.
Just on that one side?
Correct.
Right.
Would you accept the condition that nothing go on the other three sides?
Yes.
Yes. That's the plan. I see intent. Yes.
And just, Mr. Patterson, I know the board's always very concerned about construction that begins before variances. The Edelsteins spoke to Roger, and I did as well, in the middle of COVID and said, they wanted to do this. He said, no, it requires variances. They went back and said, can we start the deck only and nothing else? The permit they have now for construction is just for the deck. They've not touched anything that we're seeking the variances for this evening. So even though it's under construction and the Gubernicks have a lovely construction project next door, nothing being built presently currently needs variances.
Correct.
I'm sorry, Pete, I cut you off, but I know the board members, that's fairly important.
So the, the deck will be ultimately, or it is actually, about four and a half feet above grade. And of course, they're building the structure on top of it, because you have to be able to get underneath of it. So ultimately, that puts the whole structure, the very top of the roof at 16 feet above grade, more or less. But that's largely because we're starting at a point that's four and a half feet up above grade. So I just want to point out a couple of other things. This, because of the configuration of the lot and the position of the deck or the shade structure, it's completely behind the house that's on the corner. So it's not visible or apparent from Amherst Avenue at all. So there's no kind of blocking of views or anything like that. And looking at it from, I guess directly west to east, it's behind the bulkhead line, so it's really kind of in line with all the backs of all the properties, all the back buildings of all the adjacent properties going towards Atlantic City. What else? So a little bit about the deck infill. So when this house was built approximately five years ago, it was permitted to have the rear deck go from side yard property line to side yard property line, which is what was built. Since then, the ordinance has changed, so that if you took the side yard, if you looked at it from Amherst Avenue and you extend the side yard straight back, you could no longer build that. You know, if you wanted to build that today, you'd need a variance. But, you know, it's already there. So what we're trying to do is infill a little piece that's on the bayside and a small piece that's on the landlord side, which would be the same height as the, as the main deck that's there now. So to me, I think the purpose of creating this ordinance to prevent that is, one, to provide the view corridors between the buildings and the other was for privacy. But in this instance, the deck's already there, so adding more to it doesn't change the view corridors, because it's, you know, it's already there. And the privacy issue kind of goes away, because we're not adjacent to the neighbor. It's adjacent to our own property. So.
And Pete, for the, for the board members who perhaps weren't out there, the portion of the infill, it's towards the canal, towards the Gubernick home, portion of it behind the Edelstein home, all of which is not visible from the street. And if you're in the canal, you would have to look up and kind of over to see the portion where the Edelsteins want to just connect one side to the other, correct?
Well, it'll be visible from Amherst, but I'm just saying it's the same height as what's there, so it's not changing the views down between the buildings.
Didn't you say it was a?
I'm sorry.
The deck now being built, Mr. Patterson, the deck now being built is one foot lower than the deck behind the Edelsteins' property. The infill portion would be level with what's behind the Edelsteins' property.
So the step up would be to, to the infill, infill portion?
It would be flat. There's no step up. There's a step down to what's existing. If you were behind the Edelstein property, it would just be a flat deck across the entire back.
Got it.
It would be visible from the neighbor on Pembroke and Amherst, as well as the neighbor, the Gubernick family at 303 North Pembroke.
Can I say something? It's Mike Richmond.
Go ahead, Mike.
Okay, what, Rich, where the step up is, you are infilling, you are infilling the deck at the step up or the step down or whatever you want to call it. Okay, so the, the small area is on the bayside, and then you have another little square by the stairs that are, let's say, going down to Amherst Avenue. Is that correct, Pete?
Okay, so there's two areas. Yeah, the one on the bayside over the bulkhead would be at the same level as the existing deck. Whereas the other piece would be at the lower deck, so that'd be a foot lower.
Right, right. But the good thing is, even by doing that infill, well, we don't care about the one on the bay, but by the stairs over the grass area, you're still, you still have plenty of landscaping and that kind of stuff, right? You're not taking.
Oh yeah, we're way over on landscaping.
Right, right.
So, I'm sorry, Pete.
Okay, that's good. That's all I wanted to say.
We've got this, and, and the board members that are here were on the board when this was subdivided. And one of the big issues back then was landscaping. We said, we would always have a landscaping plan on the property. And from the Pembroke side, you're talking about a landscaped area of 85%. So the Edelsteins were particular in having Pete design something that not only met or exceeded your ordinance, but more importantly, kind of flowed through on their representations to the board when they divided the property, not really in half, but divided the property, some of which went to Gubernick, the rest of which went to Edelstein. They so far complied with the board's directive of, don't build anything habitable there and have a lot of landscaping. And Robert Edelstein and I have been discussing this. He's a big landscape guy. He wants to have a landscape plan where it really stands out. So what you're seeing is very little of the deck or the shade structure from Pembroke because of the extensive landscaping plan. Pete has street trees as requested by Roger, so all of what the board had asked for about a year and a half ago is still being maintained. And more than being maintained, actually. I'm sorry, Pete, I cut you off again, so continue.
Well, I was just gonna say, you know, the piece we added is, is probably half of that is gonna be landscaped. So, you know, when you, when they combine the properties, the net amount of landscaping, the percentage of landscaping is gonna go up for the, you know, their role, as compared to the existing property, the original property.
Okay. So Pete, we've been discussing the fact that the accessory structure obviously has to go on top of the deck and the infill. From your perspective, as a licensed professional architect, having designed many, many homes in town, does this shade structure, as it's built now in replacement of a very large dated flood damaged house, have any negatives at all associated with it?
I don't see any, no.
And to the extent there possibly could be any negatives at all, would the benefits of having a smaller, much, much smaller structure built on the deck, along with extensive landscaping and no house outweigh those detriments if they even existed?
Yes.
Okay. Ladies and gentlemen, the Edelsteins are on the call, on the, on the meet, the Zoom. They can certainly talk if you need them to, but I think Pete's established the fact that the structure as designed is certainly in line with what the board wanted from the applicant a year and a half ago. They've cut this piece off. The Gubernicks are building a non-variance addition next door. They're maintaining, meaning the Edelsteins' corridors, a view towards the canal from Pembroke. And this is, in our opinion, a fairly de minimis application. It's just going on top of the deck that's already a few feet in the air. We reserve the right to further comment, but at this point, we'll leave it back to the board.
Anyone from the board have any questions before we open it up to the public? Okay. The public portion is open. If anyone's here that would like to testify, please state your name.
Hi, Alan Gubernick, 303 North Pembroke.
Okay, Mr. Gord, Gordik.
Is that your client?
Oh, I'm Julie Gubernick.
Okay, so.
303 North Pembroke.
Okay, so can, can you each raise your right hand? I'll get you both sworn in. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, go ahead. Thanks.
We just wanted to say that we, we've seen the plans. We've talked extensively with the Edelsteins. We have no issues with the plans. We're excited about the plans. The shade issue is real, and this is a great way to, to deal with it.
And we speak in favor, obviously, of the plans. And we speak in favor, obviously, of the plans.
All right, thank you. Anyone else in the public? Public portion is closed. If there's no more comments from the board, Leo, would you want to read the motion, please?
Sure, so someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief. There's three variances. One's for the height, the first is for the height of the accessory shade structure. 16 feet is proposed, nine feet is permitted. The area, the accessory structure, 80 square feet is permitted. Mr. Weiss's testimony is that it's approximately 156 square feet. I'll just say, to the extent there's any discrepancy with, with what the testimony was and how Roger calculated it, what's a, what, if this, if this is approved, it's what's shown on the plans that were presented. And then for that rear deck height, outside the setback areas, it can only be 10 inches from grade. And then there's that, that portion that's 5.3, that fill-in proportion, it's 5.3 feet from grade. There's a couple of submission checklist waivers and we'll just say the conditions are anything in Mr. McLaren's report and any representations that the applicant made during the course of the hearing.
I'm sorry.
Not Eric, Leo, state no walls?
Yeah, and that's, that's shown on the plans, but no walls on three sides. And then that one, I think it's the Pembroke Avenue side, has that AZAC screen.
Okay, I didn't hear it, thank, thank you.
You got it.
Yeah, and we accept those conditions, Mr. Chairman.
I'll make that.
Galantino, I make a motion.
I'll second.
Tom, second.
Tom Collins?
I vote in favor of the application. This is very de minimis. The property is beautiful, the landscaping is beautiful. I think it's just a, a nice thing in Margate. I don't see any detriments to the neighborhood.
Clem Wazleski?
This is really a very interesting little project. Provide, which essentially open land, which we seem to have less and less of every day. I certainly vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
I also vote in favor for the same reasons.
Michael Cristaldi?
Did he give it a thumbs? Where's Mike?
He disappears.
Mike, did he, I see him. He's not there.
All right, he's calling, next.
Jim Galantino?
Yes, I'm sure Bernie and Phyllis Friedenberg would appreciate this. This is something that the, their house was there for many years and we could have had a two and a half story, five, six bedroom house there. And now they got this. I think it's definitely a benefit. I vote yes.
Craig Palmisano?
Yeah, it's a very nice project. I, I have no problems at all with it. Open air, you're outside, the metal roof is attractive, even though it's 212, that's fine. I approve.
Joseph D. Girallamo?
I also agree with the other board members and approve the project.
And Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members, I approve the project.
The application passes with seven votes in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you.
At the next case is Stephen and Marion Haney. 7400 Monmouth Avenue, block 301, lot 19, located in the S30 district, seeking C variance relief for front yard setback to house, front yard setback to porch or possibly others in order to construct a new single family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying haven't satisfied. Mr. Richmond?
The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinance of the city of Margate in order to construct a new single family dwelling on a property that is on the corner of Monmouth Avenue and Fredericksburg Avenue. The property has two front yards and two side yards, which inherently creates a hardship by having to have to conform to two different prevailing setbacks. Several variances are required and will be discussed briefly. Variance is required. Front yard setback building, Monmouth Avenue, whereas the prevailing setback requirement is 17.6 feet. Minimum without prevailing is five feet. For the S30 zone and the proposed front yard setback is five feet. Front yard setback, deck porch, Monmouth Avenue, whereas the prevailing setback requirement is 14.8 feet. Minimum without prevailing is five foot. For the S30 zone and the proposed front yard setback is five feet. Comments? The waivers may be granted without detriment. A long, narrow driveway is proposed. And even though the intent of the one setback was to move the driveway over, that is not being accomplished here. A clarification to the ordinance is needed to require a minimum side yard with the driveway to be 11 feet. However, a variance is not required, but I question the use of such a driveway. A variance may be better suited for requests for curb cuts from Monmouth Avenue. Parking below the structure would be advantageous as well. Both C1 and C2 criteria need to be satisfied in this application. The front yard setback variances are due to deeper setback on the one remaining property. If the existing property were utilized in the average, then it would reduce the severity of the variance request. For variance relief and waiver relief, the following pertains. The variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy C1, C2 criteria where appropriate. If the board finds that the testimony provider provides evidence that, that supports the variances, then I would recommend the below recommendations, if not already done, to be a condition of approval. Install street trees in the government strip. The condition of any approval shall be on the applicant receiving all required permits. Street opening permits may be required. Submit eight sets of plans amended based on any and all conditions set forth above and during the hearing. That's it.
Mr. Goldstein?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Goldstein, I'm ahead for the applicant, Stephen Marion Haney. Before getting to Mr. Lolio, who will be providing testimony tonight, this is a pretty unique application in that the property owners are not looking to do your house with parking underneath and to max out as much of the property as possible. They want to have a nice house, of course, but they're building it in a way where the design is less than they could without variances. They want to have less of a boxcar effect of the house due to the prevailing setbacks. And this is a case where your prevailing setback ordinance would require them, as Mr. Lolio will testify to in a little bit, to have kind of that odd shaped house in one corner of the property. And even if they did go with parking underneath, they would still have a large, high odd shaped house in one corner of the property. Property owners fairly proactive in talking to some of their neighbors. They don't want to infringe upon what's been developed in the neighborhood there, where there really hasn't been a lot of new construction. So they, they had Mr. Lolio design a house that, that fairly well meets all the requirements, but it fits into the neighborhood significantly as well. So you'll go through Roger's report, I'm sure. But if you look at this, we've got a lot width, which is undersigned, which to some extent creates a bit of a hardship. The front yard setback on the Fredericksburg side is 23 feet. They're proposing 24.3, 3 feet. The combined side yard required is 13, they're at 33. They're under on building coverage, they're over on landscape coverage, way over on front yard landscape coverage and under on height. But they do need variances for the front yard to the building and the porch on Monmouth. That's it. So they, they've had Mr. Lolio design a house, which we believe kind of fits in best with your prevailing setback ordinance. And even though we need variances, the variance request, we believe provides a better alternative than what can be built by right. Having said that, I see Mr. and Mrs. Haney on the video. Mr. Lolio is also on. I would ask him to please be sworn in by Mr. Manos and we'll walk through the project.
Sure, Mr. Lolio, your name and business address, please.
I do.
Okay, just, just state your name and business address first.
It's Robert Lolio, 219 Bellevue Avenue, Amity, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Lolio is a licensed profession.
You know, we, we know Mr. Lolio and we accept his credentials.
Thank you. So, Mr., you heard me at the beginning of the tape, the fact that the house exceeds all Margate zoning ordinances but for the front yard porch and the front yard of the building on Monmouth, which by the very constraints of the property, requires some variances. So if you don't mind, walk us through what you've designed, the fact that we're not maxing out just about any of the other possible max outs. We're not putting the garage underneath to build up a higher house than is necessary for the neighborhood. But walk us through the variances for the house on Monmouth because that's clearly what we're seeking tonight and the fact that it's a better alternative than building what we can build by right. Bobby there?
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so the intent of the, the dwelling was to keep the first floor at the minimum elevation of base flood, 4 feet, which sets the first floor at elevation 12. And as Eric mentioned, the, the clients did not want to have the parking under the house. Keep, the house, more in context with the neighborhood, there's a lot of single story dwellings on the same block. And we were trying not to create a large, you know, two and a half story house over parking. And the, as Eric's mentioned, the lot is only 37 foot wide. So if you take the 17 and a half foot setback on the Monmouth Avenue side with the, with roughly 8.6, 9 feet on the side yard, that only left us a 10.7 foot one wide house based on the average prevailing setback. So the house could have been around 10 and a half feet by 76 foot lot deep, which would have been a long, narrow house and pretty much unusable. So we decided to encroach on the Monmouth side only for the building. And the only, the deck portion that we're seeking variance for actually lines up with the width of the house on the front. It doesn't exceed past the building length. So everything is on the, the only variance we're asking for is the porches and the building on Monmouth Avenue. The house is approximately 2,750 square feet over two and a half stories. And that's pretty much it. It's just the front yard setbacks that we're asking for. As Eric mentioned, we're under on coverages, building coverage, lot coverage, front yards coverages. Everything conforms and the only thing we're asking relief for is the average, the going, minimum five foot yard setback on the front.
Mr. Lolio, obviously you're familiar with Margate Zone Code. It's in place for a very good reason to set the averages along the street. But would you say in this particular instance, the average is skewed towards the house that if you designed it as would be allowed by right, would just be a hardship property owner based upon the width and the length? You'd have a very, very narrow, very long house, as you indicated earlier, correct?
Correct, yeah. You're left with about 10, 10 and a half feet wide.
And even if you put the parking beneath that, as Mr. McLaren recommended or suggested or gave us an alternative, then you would have a very high, very narrow, very long house, rather than what you're attempting to design with the current Haney project, correct?
Correct, and we would still need a variance request because we would have to fit the parking underneath the house. And with the width of the house, you want to be able to park it more in there with the thickness of the walls. It would just make it, it would be impossible.
Mr. Goldstein? The way I, the way I need Roger's suggestion was just to have the garage face Monmouth Avenue and have a curb variance for a curb cut on Monmouth. I think that's what his suggestion is here.
We discussed it and we're, we're cognizant of the fact that the through street is generally not where city and the board likes its parking to, to enter. So really kind of specifically avoided that early on and didn't eat Roger's comment until yesterday. But with that, it's still, it's not a variance that works for the layout that the Hanes had been designing with Mr. Lolio. So we would prefer to keep it as it is, even though we don't want, we also want to back in and out on the through street.
That's okay, it's not a variance. I just wanted to know if you had considered what his suggestion. And I know.
We talked about it, now, Mr. Patterson, we talked about it after getting the report and Mr. Lolio looked at different ways to kind of whack up the house. And, you know, this is a, a hard lot to design, so the Hanes would like to keep it as submitted just because that's, it gives them the most usable space and it also stays way under on the total of just about all Margate's requirements. They, they, they're, they've done what most people tend not to do. They've designed a simpler, subtler house, but they've got a lot that's got some pretty tough constraint causing a hardship.
Thank you. Well, I think I interrupted Mr. Lolio, so go ahead.
I just have a couple of questions for Mr. Lolio. Bob, if you don't mind, do you find any detriment associated with the design as proposed, even if it's varying?
I do not. There was, as you know, there's not a large sampling to, you know, compare to on the average setbacks on the Monmouth side. So we were, we were limited to a few houses.
Okay, and to the extent there could possibly be a detriment associated with your design, would the positives of a house that was more architecturally pleasing, it actually wasn't 10 feet wide by 70 feet long, outweigh any of those negatives?
Yes.
And we've obviously reviewed Mr. McLaren's report together and he made some notes regarding the variant possibility of a curb cut from Monmouth. But we discussed that with the property owner and we determined to go with what's submitted, correct?
Correct.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, I do have the Hanes, as you can see here. To the extent you have questions for them, they're, they're, they're able to answer them. But we reserve the right to come back to Mr. Lolio. But we're prepared to turn this back over to the board.
Okay, I wouldn't swear that, unless the board just have a question of them and then we'll take care of that if that comes up, okay?
Thank you.
Chairman, I have a comment.
Mr. Palmisano?
Looking at the survey that's from the blueprint, the house right now sits at 6 and 6 and 1/2 feet from the property, Monmouth. And surprise me, it's not really much different than that as the way the house sits on that property as far as a new house compared to the existing house that's there now. It's pretty close to what's there now, what they're, what they're proposing. That was my comment.
Anyone else from the board? All right, I'm opening up the meeting to the public. If anyone that's here from the public, please state your name and be recognized.
Yes, hello, this is Rich Jaffe. I'm at 7404, I'm the neighbor.
Need to be sworn in, Mr. Jaffe.
Mr. Jaffe, Mr. Jaffe, please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thanks.
All right, go ahead. Go ahead, Mr. Jaffe.
Just, just want to go over the comment. I've spoken with the, the Hanes and my wife and I have no objection to the plan that's been submitted for the, for the new home.
And where do you live in relation to their house?
Next door, one Monmouth. We're, we're the next half, Monmouth, going towards the south.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I have a question, question, Rich, Galantino?
Go ahead, Jim.
Hey, Bob, is there any chance we can make the setback 5 foot 1? There's not fire rate assembly on that wall.
Are you saying 1 inch, Jim?
Just 1 inch. Then he doesn't have to rate that wall.
He will do that 1 inch. I can give you the inch.
We can push that for an inch.
Good catch, Jim. All right, if no one else is from the public, the public portion is closed. The board has no more questions. Leo, would you read the motion, please?
Jim, what do we need? An inch on the front yard setback? 5 feet, 1 inch?
On the side.
On the side. Monmouth side.
Side yard.
Monmouth side yard. Instead of 5 feet, 5 feet, 1 inch.
Oh, I got you. All right. So that'll be a condition. And then someone needs to make a motion for C variance relief for the following front yard setback to the building on Monmouth of 5 feet where 17.6 feet is required. And the front yard setback to the deck or the porch on Monmouth of 5 feet where 14.8 feet is required. There's a checklist waivers noted in Roger's report. On the Monmouth Avenue side yard, they'll provide one extra inch for the fire rating. And the other conditions will be anything set forth in Mr. McLaren's report and any representations made by the applicant or on behalf of the applicant during the course of the hearing.
I'll make that motion, Mrs. Joe.
A second. Galantino?
Tom Collins?
Again, this is another pretty simple case. Corner lots are terrible. Bob, I think you did a great job in designing this. I think it really fits well into that neighborhood. Give the Hanes a lot of credit. It's really going to be pretty. It's nice. It's going to be an attribute to the community and to Margate. And I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlewski?
The only issue here really is the Monmouth Avenue setback. It's very close to what the existing house is. Also, the existing house has a rather substantial porch that comes right up to the property line, which overall would give the effect of having much less setback than we're seeing. The only issue I have, and Roger mentioned it, is this 9-foot driveway. That 9-foot has come from our parking ordinance, which works just fine in parking lots, 9-foot per car. But when you get it in between a house and a fence, you may spend some nights in the car. However, that's not something that's being asked for, so I'm afraid the owners will have to suffer through it. I vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
Well, I agree with Clem about the driveway. It really can't be used, but it's not a variance. But other than that, this is the type of case that the board was designed for. We have our rules for a reason. But the rules can't fit every property. And that's why the variances are not for what do I want? It's the rules don't work on this property. And obviously, they don't work on this property. And the architect designed a house and actually the applicants designed their house smaller than what it could be. So I see no benefits to what they've designed and I easily approve this application.
Jim Galantino?
I like the fact that the street trees are now moved in from the curb cut, that little section of curb between the sidewalk and the gutter and the curb and the sidewalk and the curb. And you gave me an inch, so that takes away the fire rating. I know the driveway can't be used. But I'm looking forward to this project being built. And I think it's definitely an asset to this neighborhood and I approve.
Craig Palmisano?
Yes, it is a hardship in a corner lot. And like I said, the new house is going to pretty much match what you have there now, so it shouldn't change the neighborhood much. It's an improvement to the neighborhood and I vote in favor.
Joseph DiGeralama?
Yeah, the house is an improvement to the neighborhood. And I agree with what Rich said, that our jobs are what's due and they don't comply. And I approve of this.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I think it's a hardship variance. And I agree with Rich. There's, this is the type of reason people come for a variance. So I'm going to vote yes.
The application passes with 7 in favor and 0 opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mark and Debbie Zoomoff, 8602 Fulton Avenue, Block 643, Lot 1, located in the S-40 district seeking C variance relief for third-floor curb cuts and possibly others in order to construct a new single-family home. Taxes and water payments are current and proof of advertising and notifying have been satisfied. Mr. Richmond?
The applicant is seeking relief from the ordinances of the city of Margate in order to construct a new single-family dwelling on a property that is on the corner of Fulton Avenue and Nassau Avenue. The property has two front yards and two side yards, which inherently create a hardship by having to conform to two different prevailing setbacks. Several variances are required and will be discussed briefly. Variance is required, third-floor deck, whereas the third-floor decks are not permitted at this location and two are proposed. Wait a minute. This is one for each unit, which I don't know what he's talking about there. Width of curb cuts, whereas the maximum number of curb cuts per property is one unit based on driveways permitted and two for a total of 26 feet wide curb cuts are proposed. Half-story third floor, whereas the half-story shall be fully contained within the roof of the second floor and the proposal does not comply with the ordinance. Comments, the waiver request of the survey over 12 months old could be granted as could be the other waivers. Story half definition, the area under a hip gable or gambrel roof where the roof-to-ceiling height in excess of 5 feet is less than 50% of the floor area of the floor immediate below. Where the floor area with a floor-to-ceiling height in excess of 5 feet is more than 50% of the floor immediately below, it shall count as a full story. The half-story shall be fully contained within the roof of the second floor and having the permitted dormers and exceptions for elevators and stairways where applicable. The half-story must meet the definition above or will be a third floor which are not permitted in Margate. This was discussed on similar projects with the architect and there is no substantial reason to not accomplish this requirement. A variance for noncompliance with the definition is required. One 10-foot curb or one 18-foot-wide curb cut is permitted per property and two for a total width of 26 feet wide curb cuts are proposed. The additional width is requested for an electric surry. A reduction in on-street parking is proposed. Deck, a roofed or unroofed outdoor extension of a house or other building for the purpose of outdoor activity by the occupants. A deck must be constructed at or above a first-floor portion of a building at the level of the second story, but not above that level. Third-floor decks shall be permitted on houses facing the bay and shall be placed on the facade of the house facing the water only. Third-floor decks shall be permitted on all houses on the ocean side of Atlantic Avenue. Such third-floor decks shall be subject to all setback requirements. Third-floor decks are not permitted at this location. The third-floor deck is located within the building envelope, which is what the city is considering to permit. The house looks like a three-story house, which the city has been proactively seeking to change and is based on the zoning changes from January 2020. The original house design were started prior to any zoning changes, but do not meet the time of submission relief. Both C1 and C2 criteria need to be satisfied in this application. For variance relief and waiver relief, the following pertains. The variances being sought require testimony from the applicant to satisfy C1 and C2 criteria where appropriate. If the board finds that the testimony provider provides evidence that supports the variances, then I would recommend the below recommendations, if not already done, be a condition of approval. Install street trees in the governor's strip. A condition of any approval shall be on the applicant receiving all required permits. Street opening permits may be required. Submit eight sets of plans amended based on any and all conditions set forth and during the hearing. That's it.
Eric, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Eric Colson, on behalf of the applicant's Mark and Debbie Zoomoff. With me tonight are the Zoomoffs as well as Terry Cummings, the architect. Prior to getting to Terry's testimony, there is clarification of a couple small little things here. One third-floor deck is proposed. I think as Mr. Richmond was reading the report, he picked up what we picked up, which is it looks like they were discussing units. Maybe this was a prior report that someone at the city, maybe Roger had typed onto this one from a previous staff committee or from a previous planners' report because there only is one deck and there only is one unit of livable space on this lot. So that's an error, which Ms. Cummings will discuss. Again, with regard to the subject house, and this is something we talked about in the previous application, the Zoomoffs could have maxed this house much, much more than their current plans show. If you look at the proposed zoning schedule and Roger's report, almost every aspect of their design meets or greatly exceeds what is required. And I think it's important to walk through some of that because they could have built, designed a much larger house. They chose not to. But the house, of course, does need the variances as Mr. McLaren pointed out, for instance.
Eric, can I ask you a question real quick? When you say could have, could they have done it without variances?
They could have designed the house to be bigger, much bigger, without variances.
Okay.
And in this regard, Mr. Richmond, the front yard on Nassau to the porch is in excess. The front yard on Fulton to the building is in excess. The front yard to the porch on Fulton is greatly in excess, almost double. Minimum side yard excess, combined side yard greatly in excess. Building coverage is greatly under what they could have built. Landscape area in excess, front yard landscaping greatly in excess. Parking is in excess, but they are asking for two curb cuts, one third-floor deck and the half-story on the third floor, a little bit of a different design. Now, Roger points out in his report, and Terry's going to talk about this a little bit as well. This plan has been in effect, it's been an ongoing liquid plan here for many months. And when the design was originally submitted from Ms. Cummings and Mr. McLaren, we had not gone into our COVID lockdown yet, but very shortly after that we did. The zoning changed, even though the original plans, as Roger points out, were started prior to the zoning change, we don't technically meet the time of submission rule. But the spirit of that rule is really being followed. The other thing of great importance is this house is directly across from the bay. As Terry's going to testify, if this house were literally across the street, we don't need these variances. So having said that, I'm going to ask Terry to please get sworn in by Mr. Manos. I would ask the board to accept her as an expert in the field of architecture. The Zoomoffs are here to testify to the extent that they're necessary and we'll go from here. So Terry, if you don't mind, please be sworn in.
Sure. Terry, if you can just state your name and business address for the record, I'll get you sworn in.
I don't hear anything.
Terry, we don't hear you. Eric, you don't hear her, do you?
I don't. I see that her microphone is on, but perhaps the microphone on her computer is not on because the GoToMe shows her as being unmuted.
Right. Fred stepped out for a second. I'm not sure he can do anything from this end, though.
She could call in, Eric.
Terry, is your microphone not on the Zoom, the GoToMe, but on your computer? Is it on?
She could try her phone.
Yeah, Terry, you may have to call in and call in and stay on the computer so we can see and hear you together.
You need to dial in number. I got it.
Let me see if I have it on my phone.
Fred, we can't hear the architect. That's not on our end, though, right?
No.
Hey, I've got the dial-in number if you wanted, Eric.
That would be very helpful, Mr. Collins.
And then it says access code 486-134-589.
Tom, you were cut off halfway through. Read the thing again, please.
The second part, Rich, or the first?
The whole thing.
And then the access code is 486-134-589.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Just shut your speakers off on your computer.
Turn your microphone off on your computer. There's a lot of feedback. Turn your microphone off.
Okay, how okay.
You have to turn your speakers off on your computer. Or you could just disconnect altogether from the computer and just use your phone.
Can you hear me now?
Mr. Patterson, may we take just a couple minutes so we can strain this out? Because we want to make sure that the record is very clear and perhaps it's not as clear as it could be.
Yeah, let me, let me, let me give you, let me give you a little advice. Let me give you a little advice, first of all. You could either, Terry, you could either turn off the speakers on your computer.
I did. Can you hear me now?
Now we're good.
Now we're good.
No?
Yes.
Now you're okay.
Thank you. Thank you. So sorry about that.
All right, so just your name and business address, I'll get you sworn in.
Terry J. Cummings, 102 Arbor Court West, Lindwood, New Jersey.
And please raise your right hand. Do you swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
I do.
Okay, thanks.
I have a picture, a 3D color rendering, which I'm going to hold up for you that everyone can see. Try to get it in front of camera for you. So did you have a good sense? I'm not sure who installed this on the website. What we have here, and I am going to be repeating somewhat of what Eric said, he did a wonderful job of explaining the goals that we have on this project. I see you already went through the list with you. We have a very small house on our lot that could have been hosting a much bigger home. The Zoomoffs themselves were not looking for a bigger home. What they wanted was deck space. This house is really all about the outside space and the deck space. They have this great piece of land and this great location. So the house that we designed is a relatively small house of 2,776 square feet. And the footprint alone is only a little bit over 1,500 square feet, but we have nearly another 1,500 square feet of debt. And the reason that we have this is because they love the view, they love the sun, and they want to use the outside of their house. This is going to be their full-time home. They will live here permanently and long-term. They won't have any other locations. And the reason that we designed the house in the shape and size that we did is because they sit across the street from the bay, and at either corner of their particular lot is their best views, best sun and best views. So putting the decks on the corner of each house, as opposed to the center, really lets them take advantage of the view. Now, if the house had been across the street on the other side of Avenue, they would be allowed to have all these decks, no question that. The fact that they happen to be on this side of the street gives them a little bit of a hardship because they're able to have that view no matter what their neighbors build, no matter what other houses are there, because on the corners, there won't be any structures in the way. And they could enjoy the same view. And that's the reason I bought this property, was for the view. Now, on this house, we have parking below, we have bedrooms, just two bedroom suites on the first floor. The second floor is an open space living area, and the master bedroom up on the third floor. And the third floor deck that we are coming, in front of you, asking for the variance because it was very important that they should be able to capitalize from their master bedroom the beautiful views and sun that we would get off of that corner. One of the other requests we have is that they moved the parking, which today on the original house that we're tearing down is on Fulton, but to make it match current codes, we put it on the side and put it on the Nassau Avenue side. And we provided more parking than is required, even though we're in an area where parking is not an issue. We don't have any parking issues here. So they go to the beach lot, they have carriages, they have bicycles, they have boogie boards. Getting things in and out of the garage around the car have always been a bit of an issue. So the request was, since we have no parking issue here, could they extend that curb cut, or I should say a secondary small curb cut, to get things in and out of that additional garage door that isn't big enough for a car, but is big enough for all those other things, a little siree or a carriage, that kind of thing, so that they don't have to maneuver around their garage. We think that this is a really nice addition to the neighborhood. We feel that it does not block anyone's views. We gave you, as Mr. Collins, tons of landscaping. We prefer to have green space, we prefer to have, and we think it fits into the neighborhood and complements the whole block.
Terry, thank you, and I hope you can hear us all okay.
Yes.
You've gone through your design and the fact that the Zoomoffs could have perhaps done more with the property, variance-free, as Mr. Richmond asked earlier. And my question to you is, based upon your professional testimony as an architect, could you possibly think of any negatives or detriments to be associated with this property?
No, none.
And to the extent that there could possibly be a detriment associated with it, do you think that the benefits of your design would greatly outweigh any other possible detriments that anyone could possibly conceive of regarding the Zoomoff's design?
Yes. I just don't see any detriment whatsoever.
Okay. And if they were to have, as we call it, maxed out the property, they could still have a fairly large house, and that house would have much more coverage in an area where they would like to have more outdoor space rather than more indoor space, correct?
That's correct.
So you could wind up with a house with smaller decks, but a much, much larger physical structure, which would take up more of the footprint on the lot?
Correct. And the whole point of this design was they didn't feel they needed or wanted a bigger house. They were happy to keep the size of the house down, add a lot more landscaping in, but the debt was a part of it to them, including the third floor deck. That was an absolute goal of their project.
And as we discussed earlier, and you were on the meeting, I know, for some people, during this current crisis, indoor space is more important. For some, outdoor space is more important. And when you put this finishing touch on the project, based upon the Zoomoffs' desire to live here full-time, we designed the house that was basically outdoor-centric, the outdoor space being more important than the indoor space, correct?
That is correct.
And you've obviously presented a beautiful designed house. The rendering is fairly accurate, as far as I can tell, and shows a house with some really nice decks with views out over the sunset on the open bay. Now, Terry, I'm going to ask you to stop this for a second, and, Mr. Patterson, the Zoomoffs are here, and I think it's pretty important because even though they haven't been occupying this property full-time, I would like them to testify that, once it's built, this will be their full-time, year-round house.
Okay.
All right. Mark and Debbie, if you don't mind, would you be sworn in by Mr. Manos?
Sure. Just if you could each just state your name and address for the record, I'll swear in together.
Debbie Zoomoff, 8602 Fulton Avenue, Margate.
Mark Zoomoff, 8602 Fulton Avenue, Margate.
And could you each raise your right hand? Do you each swear affirm the testimony you're about to give will be the truth?
We do.
We do.
Thanks.
Mark and Debbie, thank you for sitting through the meeting. I know it couldn't have been all that exciting, especially what Mark normally sits through is a little different than this. I'm very envious of him. But obviously, this is a pretty big deal, and you've been designing this house for quite some time. Why don't you walk us through what you wanted Terry to design for you, and the fact that ultimately, you're going to be living here on a full-time basis?
Absolutely. Well, we are living here on a full-time basis. We came down March 15th because we had decided to do so even before the pandemic. So we are full-time Margate residents. We don't have any other residents other than this. We do own a condominium at 9,600, which is where we'll lay our heads when this is being built, and then the hope is to sell that. But we are permanent Margate residents. This is a dream home that we've planned for three and a half decades. We've both been down here since we were little kids. My mom was born in Atlantic City Hospital. I won't bore you with all the ancestry details and the roots here on Absekin Island, but you know, we love the sunsets. When we bought the property at 9,600, the views were paramount. So when we began our search for a lot, the views, that was top of mind. And when we found this, it was a done deal because the views over the bay are just amazing. And we moved in three years ago, and we love living outside. Mark works outside on the deck as much as he possibly can. We do yoga on the deck. We entertain on the deck. We're outside people. We love the fresh air. And we believe that the home is a beautiful home. Terry did an amazing job bringing our vision to life. We think it'll be a great benefit to the neighborhood. Like you said, we didn't go crazy because we believe that less is more. Neighbors have walked by and in response to the publication, and we've shown them the rendering, and everybody has loved it and wished us good luck. So that's pretty much it in a nutshell, unless you have any questions for us.
No, thank you for that. It is an important story to know, you know, put a name to a face into an application. So obviously, Terry did the explanation as to the architecture, but I think it's important, and hopefully the board does, that this isn't something you're doing on a whim that you're going to then sell and try to make a profit. You're in for the long haul. You want those views out over the sunset, and it's important. So thank you. Mark, I don't know, do you want to say anything? Are you okay with what that said?
I'm not typically comfortable speaking on camera. That's why I'm letting my wife do it.
All right. We appreciate that. Chairman, I would reserve the right to come back to both Ms. Cummings and to the Zoomoffs, but for now, you know, based upon the location of the property being out over the bay, if it were across the street, they'd have a bayfront property, it would be a slightly different story. The house directly next door to them is under construction. It's a nice little renaissance of that area on Fulton, Mansfield, and Nassau, but again, the house does need variances, and as Ms. Cummings testified, we think that the variances are justified based upon the size of the lot, the location, and you know, we're going to rest for now, but reserve the right to come back, please.
All right. Oh, I have a comment or question for Terry. I want to go back to a previous case where the, where the sunroof was built over that deck, and your argument was that, well, you're allowed two with 80 feet, and this is one that's under 160 feet, so that's fine. Well, there's a reason, whatever the reason is in the master plan, it's not fun. You were allowed two with 80 feet, so it's not the same thing. When this master plan was redone after a lot of work, the intent was for the third floor to be contained within the roof line, and that's the way it was for several years until apparently there was some discrepancies or technicalities in how it was worded, and the architects, not Terry, but any other architect, started building these houses where it looked like the full third floor even though it wasn't. And the intent all along was the full third floor looks massive. The public didn't want it. That was a constant comment, and that we wanted, and we made the change deliberately as soon as we could to make the third floor be back within the roof line of the second floor. If that was done, the other thing is, decks aren't permitted. We have been allowing decks, but the only ones we've been allowing are decks that are cut into the roof line, set back in, hardly visible from the street. That is very possible. If the third floor was built without a variance, you would still have the same views off the deck. The deck would be cut into the roof line, and it wouldn't be a problem. So to me, this is just blatantly against what we've been trying to do, and when it wasn't done that way, we corrected ourselves to make sure it was done properly. And this just runs counter to everything we've been trying to do. And you can still have your third floor deck, you can still have your third floor. It just needs to be designed the way that the public and the board wants it to be done. Now, I understand you said you started this before the rules changed, but it wasn't in on time, so it does make a difference. And this house is not on the bay, it's across the street. So the argument that it's across the street from the bay and should meet the bay requirements doesn't mean anything. And the other thing which actually irritates most of the people, I speak mostly because I hear from the board, that is aggravating to the board, is you could build a much bigger house without variances. Be or against.
May I respond to that?
Please, Terry. That was kind of directed to you as to designing the third floor and the third floor deck.
What I would like to say about that is this. If we designed a much bigger house than they needed, we would have a bigger third floor to work with, and perhaps it would have been possible to hide a lot more of it under the roof. The fact that we chose, in this instance, to design a much smaller house on this particular lot, they end up getting penalized about the third floor. Now, true, this was designed before that certification was made, and the reason that the design of the third is as it is is because of emergency egress requirements, and in some cases, view, to get as much view, which is one of the most important aspects of their design. Also, I'd like to tell you to keep in mind, and that's why I have the 3D rendering, that third floor, what we have, our finished attic, is set way, way, way back away from the street, away from both streets. So it doesn't feel like a big tall house because it's surrounded by decks on the outside. It does stick up, and it doesn't have the look, but with putting it underneath a bigger roof line, you would lose the view, and we would run into some egress problems. There's only one small master suite up there. We just don't have a lot of room to work with because where below is so small. It does actually seem a thousand percent fair to penalize them because they're choosing a smaller house rather than building one of the big infrastructures that we have now.
To use the word penalize is ridiculous. We're not penalizing anybody. We give you as the architect the parameters to build a house. And also, if you build a bigger house that conforms, would appear to be a smaller house if it was within the roof line. That was the purpose, was the actual massiveness of the house. We also raised the height of the roof line to 30 feet, but we wanted to keep the mass, the appearance of mass through public comment and demand minimized.
I understand that.
We're not penalizing anybody. And I don't know why they can't still have the third floor and the third floor deck and not have the views they want.
I was trying to maximize the beauty of the site, which in our case, of course, is the adobe and the woodwork. And again, when it was redesigned, those restrictions were not clearly in place or understood. So once it was already designed, we were hoping coming to the board with our explanation would be enough to allow the variance to keep this because it is a very nice design, and it gives them a lot on what is a very tiny third floor.
Anyone else on the board?
Yeah, yeah, this is Craig. Terry, the size of the third floor deck, is it something like 12 by 14?
Yes.
The size of that third floor deck?
I believe it's approximately 12 by 14, yes.
What we've been trying to do is, we've been regaining approvals for the third floor deck, something like six foot by 10 foot, six by 12, so they're not a congregating area where you can just step outside for a breath of fresh air and see what the weather's like, and incorporate it into the roof line also. I have another question about the curb cut. The half of curb cut is for what reason?
They like to go-
You have a half-
And they have-
Go ahead.
Yeah. Yes. But my understanding is they like to go to the beach. They have a lot of pep and alea to take to the beach with them, and they plan to park their cars in the garage. And rather than trying to get in and out, and they have a little car they like to use, they were asking, since it isn't any kind of parking issue there, could they get an extra curb cut in this particular instance? That is something that'd be up to the board, and it's just a request, that's all.
Right. Well, we have two garage doors, two large garage doors, which is a double curb cut as it stands, and that's what we reduced our curb cuts to, an 18-foot or 19-foot curb cut, I'm not sure which it is exactly. And so the other one, you're having another curb cut in front for a small, half of a garage door. Why can't the double garage doors be used to get in and out? That's my, because we don't like to see extra curb cuts. We're taking away parking spaces, even though it's not that true though on that street. But I don't like seeing parking spaces disappear, okay? That's my comment.
Well, I think the homeowners, I think the homeowners would be okay with deleting the curb cut. As I said, it was a request that we kicked in for, not a major big issue. It's something we would have liked, but the board feels that it's not a purpose, and that we would go with that.
That's only my opinion. I don't know the other board's opinions.
Well, the garage door could stay there. They could just access it from the one curb.
That's what they would do.
When was the-
Anyone else have questions for Terry or Eric or the Zoomoffs?
But I don't like seeing parking spaces disappear. Okay? That's my comment.
I think the homeowners would be okay with deleting the curb cut. As I said, it was a request that we kicked in for. Not a major big issue. It's something we would have liked, but the, the board feels that that it's not a purpose. They're not, we would go with that.
That's only my opinion. I don't know the other board's opinions.
Well, the garage door could stay there. They could just access it from the one curb.
That's what they would do.
When was the?
Anyone else have questions for Terry or Eric or the?
This is Tom.
Tom, go ahead.
Just for Eric, then, does that mean that from what Terry said, that you're eliminating the curb cut variance?
I don't know. We haven't discussed it with the Zoom offs and Terry said that, of course. But I don't want to do anything without discussing with the clients, at least for a minute. So I would wait, Mr. Collins, until the rest of the board members have questions or comments, and then I would certainly talk to the clients about whether they were willing to amend.
Right, okay. Anyone else from the board have questions, comments?
Yeah, it's Mike, it's Mike Richman.
Oh, Mike?
What was, as far as the dates go, what was the cutoff date to start enforcing the half story being closed into the roof structure? Does anybody know?
No.
Okay, well.
I don't remember when we changed it.
Nobody knows?
No, it was soon after that house on Union and Winchester was built. And then a duplicate was built on Quincy. It was, that was when, that was the most blatant attempt. And that was a couple of years ago.
Okay, so we're not talking like within the, within the realm of the pandemic time, like in March or April. We're talking, are we saying like a year ago or, you know, I, I just want to know.
I don't think it was, I think it's been less than a year, but it's been more than since April or March.
It has, and Mr. Patterson's correct. What happened was the zoning change was enacted. Oh, we're not trying to hide the ball here. The zoning change was enacted early this year.
Right.
The plans were not formally submitted until a little bit later. Terry had been working on the plans, but the Zoom offs, excuse me, hadn't gotten to a final version until that ordinance had passed. So we'd be disingenuous to say that the plans were formally in before then, but they were in the works and they had been submitted to Roger for review. They were just being modified over and over again. So the final modifications came after, but they were pretty close in time to the time of submission rule. But admittedly, we don't meet it. We can't prove that we meet it.
But Roger's not here and I can't speak for him, but I can tell you my half of the conversations with Roger was, let's get this thing passed to stop anything future from happening. So if anyone was cut off, it was by design. Let's get it passed as soon as we can.
It looks, it looks like.
Really, that's correct.
Looks like Rich, January 16th, 2020, the city adopted, adopted the amendment to the, to the definition of half, half story.
But with regard to the spirit of the rule, and obviously there are technicalities here, we do believe the Zoom offs have met that. They got caught in the COVID switches, which is not necessarily a catch all excuse, but they're not trying to, you know, Mr. Patterson, I know that there's been some dispute about the house across from City Hall, whether the owners were trying to get away with something, for lack of a better word. Maybe they were, maybe they weren't. But that house looks like a legitimate three story house. The Zoom offs really said to Terry, design us what's legal. To design them pretty much everything they could get. But we understand the variances are there. We've not disputed it at all. And potentially we might have some discussion among ourselves to be able to come to a resolution. So I don't want to forego that opportunity. But I do want to hear from the other board members as to whether that's something that, you know, they would consider.
Anyone else? Okay, I'm going to open it up to the public now. If anyone's here from the public, if you would state your name and I will recognize you. Okay, public portion is closed. Anything from the board? Do you have anything else, Eric, or anything else from the board?
I think I do. If you don't mind, Mr. Patterson, I would like a minute just to discuss with Ms. Cummings.
A minute to discuss with your client.
I'm going to call, so Terry, I'm going to mute my computer so no one can hear what we're saying and I'm going to call. Mr. Patterson, may I speak? Are we all on? So I was able to.
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I was able to speak to the Zoom offs as well as Terry. And what they have done smartly, I believe, is to listen to the board's comments, not advice, but comments with regard to the way the third floor was designed along with the deck. So they are willing to make the change so that the deck and the third floor comply with the intent of the ordinance and don't stick out as they are presently. I don't know. I'm going to leave that to Terry to figure out how to.
I don't think it's correct.
It doesn't eliminate the third floor deck variance. It would eliminate the.
Yes, I understand. I understand.
It eliminates the third floor look variance. But look, the Zoom offs are smart. They heard what you said. They want that deck on the third floor to look out over the water. So in order to get that, they understand that there's a give back. And the give back is that the third floor not look so uniform with the remainder of the structure. So Terry probably has a bit of a challenge, but nobody can get it done better than her. I will leave it to her to submit new plans to Mr. McLaren.
Eric, it's Tom.
Hi, Tom.
What about the small curb cut for the third door?
Look, they like it, but if they can't get it, they can't get it. Look, they're all, again, reasonable people that would prefer to have it there. As, as Craig said, you know, not a great, this isn't exactly your busiest street for parking. Parking's never really an issue there. But if the board is not in favor of that type of curb cut, then they'll have to live with the other.
I think you would make it easier.
You, you have to make that decision, Eric.
Well, I think that's the Zoom offs' decision. And they've decided if it's a choice between the curb cut and everything else, the curb cut is something they could sacrifice. The third floor deck is very important. It's a beautiful view out over the water and they would prefer to do that. So they would give up the curb cut, keep the third floor deck, and Terry could change the roof line so it looks what the ordinance envisioned when it was passed back in January of 2020.
Eric, with the curb cut, if you removed it with that, then that variance go away?
Yes.
It would go away.
You could ask to do that as a separate vote too. I, I don't know if you want to, but.
No, listen, we've been on this meeting now for, you know, almost three hours. The board's been reasonable. The Zoom offs have been listening. They understand that sometimes you ask for something you don't always get, but the reasonable requests are considered. So ultimately, if the reasonable request is for Terry to design a third floor that's a little less of a standout and the third floor deck exists, if the elimination of the curb cut is what it takes to get there, then that's okay. It's not great, but it's what they can live with.
But we can't make that decision, Eric.
They've made that decision. We've discussed it.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, I'm not asking for advice, and I know you can't give an advisory opinion. But Rich, you have been fairly specific, as has Tom. And the third floor deck is very important. The outdoor space, as Terry testified, is the thing.
And we understand that, and that's what we're working towards. I, but I can't speak for the board, but I don't see any problem with it. Absolutely, we want you to have that deck and get that view. When we vote. So where, where do we stand now?
So.
Go ahead.
We would request an amendment to the application be considered with the elimination of the second small curb cut.
Minutes?
The third floor would be the type of third floor envisioned in the January 2020 ordinance change. And then the deck would be cut in. I'll leave that to Terry to design, of course. So the Zoom offs still have their third floor deck.
The only problem, I, I, I think that's a very good suggestion or whatever. But I think at this point, without seeing what that deck is, we would have to leave that up to the discretion of Roger, if that's okay with you. We can't say we approve of that. It could be the whole way to the house. It could be anything. So I think, I think the board's reasonable and we would leave it up to Roger to say if it meets the intent of what we're doing.
And I would rely on Roger because I think he, as well as the board, is reasonable. And Terry, you can get it done as good as anybody else, maybe better. We'll figure that out.
Okay.
Can I just say one thing? It's Mike Richman.
Yes.
When we were talking about what the, I think the wording, Eric, would be that the half story will be in compliance with our zoning. It's not what we envisioned is, is what, what we want to be complied to. So I, I just, you know, it's just the wording of it, okay?
Fair enough.
Okay.
All right, so if I'm understanding it, it's, it's one variance. Third, third floor deck. And Roger's going to make sure it's satisfactory.
I think doing that instead of making them come back again makes all the sense in the world. I think the board has the confidence of Roger to see if it's reasonable. And Roger and Terry can work it.
As do Wade, of course.
Okay. Anything else from the board? We did public portion, didn't we? I'm getting a little bit. Did we do public portion?
Yes.
Thank you for the Zoom off. All right, Leo, would you read the motion, please?
Yes, as amended, we're down to one variance. It's a C variance for, to allow the third floor deck. The curb cut, cut variance goes away. The half third, or the third story variance goes away. There's a couple checklist waivers as noted by Roger, including the, the survey's a little bit older. Those are no big deal. And the conditions will be the applicant will comply with any representations it made during the course of the hearing, anything else in Roger's report unless otherwise addressed. And we'll say that the applicant will submit revised plans consistent with the approval granted and also of the, obviously showing that third floor deck. And the deck will have to be satisfactory in Roger's discretion. The third floor deck.
I'll make that.
I'll make a motion. I'll second. Galantino.
Tom Collins?
Well, board members, as you all know, I am not a big proponent of third floor decks. In this case here, though, the third floor decks that I don't mind are the ones that are in the ocean or the bay. I think they belong. In this case here, you're so close to the bay. None of this application bothered me except the street cut. I think Terry designed a wonderful house. I think it's gorgeous. I think the Zoom offs are going to love this house. I think it's going to be an improvement to the neighborhood. I see no negative criteria that would deny this application. And I think everything that I do see is positive. It's an improvement to the neighborhood and improvement to the city. I vote in favor.
Clem Wazlaski?
Based on what Tom just said, I'm a little confused in what we're voting on.
To allow a third floor deck.
That's it. We're allowing it. We're cut, are we going to allow it or aren't we? A third floor deck, that's it. Everything else will conform to the zoning.
We are going to have a resubmitted set of drawings to Roger, which will include a third floor incorporated into the roof of the second floor below and including a deck that is not projected.
The, the revised plans will include a third or really a half story, which complies with our ordinance, the elimination of that second curb cut and a third floor deck that is presumably cut into the roof and that Roger's going to exercise his discretion, knowing what the board typically looks for in third floor decks.
So we're voting for a revised plan, not what was.
Yes.
To that extent, to that, I'll vote in favor.
Richard Patterson?
The board has seen a lot of Terry's plans. I, no matter what she comes up with to correct this, I'm sure it's going to be beautiful. Like I've never seen anything of hers that wasn't spectacular. I'm very happy that, that you conform to the board's wishes and I wish you all the best luck. I vote yes on this application. I see no detriment at this point whatsoever. I vote yes.
Is Michael Cristaldi on or no?
I think we lost Mike, right?
We lost, we lost him about an hour ago.
Yeah.
Jim Galantino?
Pull the cabinet.
I, I think Clem just summed it up perfectly. I mean, we're, you know, he was confused. Now it's clear. Terry's going to make a nice little cut in third floor deck. Rich stood his ground and I think this all gets what the board's been looking for. And I approve this application.
Craig Palmasano?
Yeah, I agree with the other board members. This is what we're looking for as far as third floors. And thank you for removing the curb cut and I approve.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments, Mr. Palmasano.
Joseph DiGeralamo?
Yes, I think this is great, you know, we redesigned that third floor deck, took away the curb cut, I looked at the house, it's a great looking house, it's gonna look great there, the Zoom offs are gonna really enjoy it, I approve.
Michael Richmond?
Yeah, I appreciate them conforming to what we were trying to reach here in the city of Margate, so I'm gonna approve it.
The application passes with seven in favor and zero opposed.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. We discussed at the last meeting that we were gonna vote tonight on the, whether we were going to recommend that the forestry plan be incorporated in the master plan. Somehow the timing of press case was missed, and we're going to vote on that next month when we have the proper notification. This has nothing to do with you, Eric, or Zoom offs, if you wanna leave, you can stay if you want. But what I would like to do, we've all had six months or more to look at this plan, if there's any questions, comments, I know, Tom, you've had comments, and I'd like you to bring them up, present your comments before the board, and Steve, you have comments, unless nobody wants to say anything, we'll vote on it next, next month. But if anybody has concerns, or is for it or against it, I would like to spend just five minutes now getting some of it out there so the board has more thinking.
Rich, this is Tom.
Your head's waving back and forth negatively.
Well, no, I don't think five minutes of comments in my part would be even enough to get started. I've got page after page after page. If we're gonna do this, we should actually have a thorough discussion of the entire report and go through it, because if we're gonna recommend this be part of the master plan, we need to know that.
Well, then, go ahead.
You wanna go through it line by line? It's gonna take a long time, it's not gonna be five minutes, it'll take a couple hours.
Well, then, I can't accept that, we're not gonna do that.
What do you wanna do? You can't just vote on something if we don't go discuss it and review it.
Tom, we've had eight months to review it, what's your problems with it?
We haven't reviewed it as a board in public, we've each reviewed it individually. And I mean, ask Leo, if we're gonna vote on something, I have the right to discuss it before we vote on it.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's up to you, you wanna spend the time now, we can do that.
Well, is it gonna be time now or time next month? Do you want two hours to discuss it? I can limit discussion to ten minutes.
Well, how can you limit discussion by board members on a, on an issue like that? You can't do that.
Well, we can't have every board member speaking for two hours, so-
But we have to review the report, maybe we need to get a committee together, I'd be glad to be part of a committee, and then we make a recommendation next month.
No, we're gonna vote on it next month, Tom. So if you wanna discuss it next month before, then we'll do that.
Well, it's up to you. I mean, what's everybody else thinking?
You know, Rich, I don't think that having a committee review, because there's a lot of stuff in there that I had, you know, I really don't know if I'm quite sure about it. And, you know, there are a lot of things to cover in there, and it would be, I think, a smart move to get a group of people to get together and sit there and just hash that out.
This is something the whole board has to do, and they realize the city's already accepted this, they just want us to either add it to the master, recommend it be added, or, we're not accepting this plan, we're saying whether it should be added to the master plan or not, the city's already accepted. It's not up to us to reject the plan.
We're not trying to reject it, Rich, we're trying to say whether it should be added to the master plan.
Yeah, you're saying what I'm saying, I agree with it.
Okay, yeah, but, I mean, there's a lot of stuff here, and I think maybe we'd be better off thanking them accepting it and letting the professionals deal with the bulk of it, instead of us trying to do it. And Roger McLaren, when I talked to him, he agreed and said the same thing, you can check with him.
Yeah, you speak for the mayor, too, I understand that, so-
No, I don't, I speak for me, the citizens of Margate, and I talked to Roger specifically, and he'll confirm that. I don't speak for the mayor.
Well, you don't speak for Roger either, so let's, we'll discuss it tonight, or we'll discuss it next month.
All right, well, let's discuss it next month.
Okay.
This is Clem, I got a question.
I'd like to hear from everyone, just what you think about it.
Well, I'm trying to let you hear from me, but not have much-
If you have anything other than two hours to say, well, what about this, does the green team have too much power, can we force people not to take down trees, anything like that, bring up your concerns just now, and then we'll discuss it for three hours next month.
Rich, a question, please. If the city has already accepted it, what difference does it make whether it's in the master plan or not?
The city asked us to do that. We're responding to a request from the city manager.
Why does he want it?
Rich? The city manager, Steve, would you say, you have it written down, what the city manager asked, he wants us to say it shouldn't be in there, it should be in there, and I think there was a third choice.
Actually, Rich, I have it right in front of me, if you want me to read it, and he said, I suggest that the plan be one of the following, accept it as part of your master plan-
Right.
-acknowledged as a separate document and made part of the review process for applications-
Okay.
-modified in any way and then accept it as either one or two of both, reject it as written and returned with the direction to the Sustainable Margate team, or acknowledged with thanks to the Sustainable Margate team with no further action at this time, which there's so many discrepancies in the report, the last thing is what I think we should do, and it would save a lot of time. And then let you, or Roger McLaren, or some of the professionals in the city come up with a landscape and a tree plan instead of a forest tree plan.
The city has already accepted this forestry plan.
Right.
Right.
Rich, the, yeah, the forestry plan was actually submitted on behalf of the city, so it's already done for them. We, we did a tree inventory back in 2017, we hired an intern to count all the trees and give you the condition of it, and at the pleasure of the board, I would like to submit that to them so they could see what's at stake and what's involved in it, so they can go over and see if this is a worthy cause. We have over, the trees counted was not, had nothing to do with any private trees, but trees that were on the curb cuts, I mean, the curb cuts, the-
Governor's Strip.
On the governor's strips, parks. So they're basically the city trees. At the count at night in 2017, we had 3,779 trees of various species, most of which have been, are now, the percentage is now going into 44.69% of the trees are now the Bradford pears, which we are trying to eliminate, but this is going on, on, you know, whatever. But we have a value, the tree value of our city is about $6,288,028. That's all put into this tree inventory, done through this program called the iTree. I think dealing with something with that much money and that has that much value should be part of the master plan, and they should have, the city zoning officers should have control over that.
And is that what you're saying, you see that in the forestry plan?
Yeah, forestry plan, it's just, it's just a plan, I mean, I had talked, I had spoken with Anthony Edge, and we had a phone conference with the forestry guide two weeks ago, the state forestry guide, and we were trying to figure out, you know, what is the advantage of this. So it does give us a better insurance plan for it, because it shows that we're taking some proactive steps in it. Also, there are, requirement is to have, what, you need two people certified in the tree management thing, and then you have-
As employees of the city?
What's that?
As employees of the city?
One, one has to be, at least one has to be an employee of the city, and then you can have a volunteer, which we have, that would be Bob Blumberg. And he's a far, he's a landscape guy, so that's a good thing. But the city really does, we're too small, the city, to have like a separate person, you know, a tree expert in here, but a lot of the cities do have it, a lot of, I just thought it would be a very positive thing, the work was done, the Public Works Department has, has their plan laid out, they know what they do, something goes down, and plus, it just gives us better control. I would like to know what Tom's concerns are, I went through, and I haven't seen anything.
Rich, just to summarize real quick, number one, you have a member of the green team, and a member of the board, planning board, acting as a dual relationship, he should not be allowed to present to the board or talk on this issue because he's conflicted. Leo can go on that and tell me the truth, whether, he should, he should be disqualified, just as if he was on the homeowners list. Number two, if you go through here, they're requiring city employees, commissioners, to go to forestry tree classes every year, they're talking about getting, having the green team come out and give permission to cut down trees, or to advise whether trees are diseased and get cut down, the layers of government, we're adding so many layers of government here, it's pathetic, and this report is too comprehensive. If we would get a landscape plan with Roger McLaren and save the trees, I'm all for the trees, but not this way. If we would go and do a landscape plan, talk to Roger, and save the trees, and put it all in there, and have the city manage it, I'd be all in favor of this.
I, I look for that, Tom, because you brought that to my attention, and I could not find where the green team had that power.
Says right here, I have it all highlighted, if you wanna get together with me, I can sit and review it with you, I'd be glad to.
I don't know if I could sit with you for three hours, Tom.
You don't need three hours, 20 minutes.
You got Zoom now, too.
You know this better than I do, is, does the green team have the power to tell people they can or can't cut down a tree, or whatever, whatever you were trying to tell them?
If we made this a master, part of the master plan, it would be yes.
I'm not, Steve, I couldn't find that, and I, when you told me that, so-
Yeah, but Steve can't give you that answer, because he's part of the green team. Leo, am I right here?
I'm asking Steve, and I'm, Steve, would you give me your answer? If you want to-
Go ahead.
Rich, I'll tell you honestly, I have not seen that anywhere, and I'll tell you honestly, that I don't know any green team member that's supposed to be that involved with it.
I just, I didn't see that, because I couldn't, so I do wanna see that.
Yeah, Tom, if you can highlight that and send it to us, I, you know, I'd like to know where that is, too.
But I wanna know, let's, Palmisano, do you have anything to say on this? I mean, we've, we've been talking about this, and everyone's supposed to have looked at it, I know it's a big article, but we've had plenty of time.
No, I just, I'd like to review the whole pamphlet again, before our next meeting, you know, just to refresh, it's been out there for a while.
I understand that, but that last meeting, I said to the whole board-
I know.
We're gonna vote on it this week. So I'll say again to the whole board, we're gonna vote on it next week, next month, unless things change, nothing's in stone, Tom, but we, if we're gonna do it, we have to decide now if it's gonna be advertised, we can always not vote on it. But I would like the board to look at it, talk to Tom, get his concerns, talk to Steve, get his concerns. But we've been asked by the city to do this, and we'll do it one way or the other, so it doesn't mean we're gonna pass it one way or the other, we might say, this is ridiculous, we don't want anything to do with this, but it's time to get this done.
Can I make a comment? It's Mike Richmond.
Mike, I want comments from everybody.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, you know, I, we keep, this isn't just about this thing, this is like, let's go back to the nine-foot wide driveway, I thought we changed that like, like a year ago, I thought we were gonna make it 10 or 11 feet, and then the thing with the third floor decks, I mean, we've been talking about that for months, I thought it was a done deal, and now, you know, so, let's, yeah, let's just get something done, let's just vote on it next month, everybody take the time to read it, and then next month, just plan on being here a little longer, and we'll discuss it, and we'll go one way or the other. I mean, you can't keep dragging this stuff, you know, continually on.
I talked to, I, this, this does have to do with the virus, too, because things just got pushed to the side, but I talked to, I talked to you last month, Mike, about the, the third floor deck, and the applicants about it, and said, we're gonna get it done, and I talked to Roger, and he said, it will be done by the next meeting, not this meeting. And I think I called you back, but-
You did, you did, yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying as an example, the same thing with the nine-
Things that we talked about, we'll be voted on next meeting.
Right, okay.
So we'll be moving to something.
Okay, good. But my point is, let's just get it done, let's vote on it next month and be done with it.
Is this document, Rich, that we have?
So, Rich, I have a question, so there are four or five, four or five things that we have to decide how we're gonna vote, you know, A, B, C, or D. What happens if we all vote, I vote A, somebody votes, you know, we're all in concert?
That's a Leo.
Break it down to one, or A, or B?
That's a Leo question.
You're gonna need a majority vote to do something, so if three people vote on five different options, then, then we're, then we have no answer, nothing.
Then, so, so we would, if it didn't get a majority vote, we would take the lax of it, correct?
Yeah, you need a majority vote.
Okay, that's a good job.
Rich, is this document, on the first page, it talks about stuff still needing input, is that?
You're killing me. I'm not staying here for another second.
Well, I'll call you, we'll, we'll talk between the next meeting, I just, I just wanted to know, this is a complete document.
Any other business? Any other, but, let me just ask, any other board members have objections, or you just haven't looked at it? All right, is there any other business?
Hey, Rich-
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Rich, I just have one other comment, this was a five-year plan, so this is gonna expire in 2022.
Who said that?
I did, Steve.
I did?
That doesn't help.
All right.
Steve, just not you.
To adjourn?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second, I'll second, Galantino.
All in favor of adjourn?
Bye.
See you, Rich.
All right.
Goodbye.